Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Little Rock City Planning Commission Board Meeting. And this meeting is now started. So at this time here, I want to welcome everybody. Thank you for coming out. I know we have a lot of items on the agenda for today. So if you don't have a seat, we apologize for that. But we want to move this accordingly. And we will go ahead and open up and get a roll call. Torrance, if you will.
Brown.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hodges.
Here.
Lundey.
Here.
McDonald. Commissioner McDonald. Person. Commissioner Person. Samad.
Here.
Vogel. Commissioner Vogel. Baxter.
Here.
Russell.
Present.
Bickers.
Present.
We have a forum.
Point of information. Commissioner McDonald just joined the call. She just joined on, so come on.
Pardon?
Commissioner McDonald.
Commissioner McDonald is on his own call here. Can we make that correction?
It's been corrected.
Thank you. All right. Having that, I think all the commissioners have looked over the minutes. I would love to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Brown.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Lundey.
Yes.
McDonald. Commissioner McDonald, we can't hear you.
Commissioner McDonald, you may have your Zoom on mute. If you can unmute it, please.
She also needs her video on for a vote.
There may be some technical difficulties. Can we move forward with hers?
Yes, sir. Person. Samad.
Yes.
Vogel. Baxter.
Yes.
Russell.
Aye.
Bickers.
Yes.
All right. Moving right along here. Before we go to our consent approval agenda, I'm going to make a quick pause here. And I'm going to have Torrance, he's going to actually specify on one item. So I want to go ahead and let's approach that now. The floor is yours, Torrance.
This is item 20Z1009. The applicant is requesting deferral to the August 8th meeting. He has to request a deferral at the podium. Mr. Tim Daters, would you please come to the podium?
I saw Tim here earlier. I'm their attorney for the applicant as well. And I'm sure, here he comes.
There he is.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. You had made a call request for a deferral until the next month meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, please.
Okay. All right. If we do not have any type of feedback from any of the commissioners for this deferral, I would love to entertain a motion for his deferral until August meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the deferment of item number 20. Can I get a roll call, please?
Brown.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
McDonald. Person. 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 McDonald.
Meeting, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, please.
Okay, all right. If we do not have any type of feedback from any of the commissioners for this deferral, I would love to entertain a motion for his deferral until August meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second for the deferment of item number 20. Can I get a roll call, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Lundey?
Yes.
McDonald? Person? Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
All right, it's been deferred and moved to August 2024 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this particular time, we're going to have the reading of the consent agenda at this time. Torrance, the floor is yours.
This is the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting for July 11th, 2024. Item one, S1963, is being deferred to the August 8th, 2024 agenda due to legal, to further legal issues. The deferral will not be charged to the applicant. Item 12, Z1002, is being deferred to the August 8th, 2024 agenda as applicant failed to complete notifications as required. Number 20 has been taken care of. Item 22, Z10011, is being deferred to the August 8th, 2024 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item 25, Z-9955, is being deferred to the August 8th meeting, 2024 agenda as applicant failed to complete notifications as required. Item 28, Z10012, is being deferred to the August 8th, 2024 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item number two has been removed from the consent agenda and moved to the regular agenda. The applicant will need to stay after consent agenda is read. The next item on consent is item three, Z9974, Beyond Boundaries 3 Group Home Special Use Permit at 3212 Holt Street. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item four, Z-9975, Beyond Boundaries 4 Group Home Special Use Permit at 1012 South Park Street. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph D and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number five has been moved to the regular agenda. Item number six has been moved to the regular agenda. Item five is Wu-Bang Carisalon, you will need to stay following the reading of the consent agenda. Item six is Midarc Houses LLC, the applicant will need to stay following the reading of the consent agenda. Item number seven, Z-9987, has been removed from the consent agenda. This is rezoning at 9424 Interstate 30. The applicant will need to stay following the reading of the consent agenda. The next item on consent is item nine, Z-5258G, Rowan Development, Revised PCD. This is at 12210 West Markham Street. Staff recommends approval of the Revised PCD zoning subject to the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs E and F and the staff analysis update of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 11, Z-7667B, Central Acquisitions LLC, this is a Revised PCD at 1414 Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the Revised PCD subject to the compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 13 has been removed from the consent agenda. That is S1953A, this is the Romero Edition. The applicant will need to remain after the reading of the consent agenda. The next item on consent is item 14, S1965A. This is track 1A Razorback Square Shopping Center, Revised Platte at 2500 Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary platte subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 15 has been removed from the agenda, from the consent agenda and moved to regular agenda. This is S1975 Mountain Brook Subdivision Preliminary Platte. Item 16 has been removed from consent agenda. Applicant will need to remain following the reading of the consent agenda. That is S1976, this is a replat at 1516 South Ringo Street. The next item on consent is item 17, S-1977, lots 2R and 3R, Block 12, Kemble South Park Edition. This is replat at 2909 South State Street. Staff recommends approval of the proposed replat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 18 is Z-1005, this is Patterson STR1 Special Use Permit at 1617 South Battery Street. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit request subject to compliance with comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 19 has been removed from consent to regular. The applicant will need to remain after the reading of the consent agenda. This is Beyond Boundaries located at 13006 Lemon Crest Lane. The next item on consent is item 21, Z-10010. This is a rezoning from R2 to I1 MF12 and OS located at West 5224 Stagecoach Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested I1 MF12 and OS rezoning. Item 24, Z-5239J, Our House, this is Revised POD at 302 East Roosevelt Road. Staff recommends approval of the Revised POD subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Continuing on page five on consent is item 26, Z-10004 Kaufman Development LLC Hotel, this is a PDC located at 1222 through 1226 Kaufman Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 27, Z-1007 ALRM Little Rock, this is a PDR located at 3301 West Capitol Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the proposed PDR zoning as filed. The last item on consent is item 29. This is Z-10001-A Divine PDC located at 9814 Davemar Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to PDC subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. That concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you for the reading. We've heard the reading of the consent agenda, and I would love to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call for voting of the approval of the?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Lundey?
Yes.
McDonald? Person? Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. So if your item number was on the consent approval agenda and it was passed, you are more than welcome to leave. We would love you to stay, but you are more than welcome to actually leave at this particular time, and we would just give a quick minute for your departure. If your item was on the list and moved to the regular agenda, you would definitely need to stay, and I'm going to call the numbers out as in order as I receive them on the item list, okay? So let me call them out now here, just for the record. So we have the, under the regular agenda now, the current one, we have item number eight. We will have item number 10 as follows. Item number 15. Item number 23. Item number 2, 6, 7, 13, 16, 19, number 5, and number 30. So at this particular time, we can move right along to, the first item on here is item number eight, Z-9988. Is the applicant present? If so, you can make your way to the podium, and before I ask for the reading on this, just to let you know, if you're the applicant or if you're here tonight in opposition on one of these particular items, both sides have up to 20 minutes. So if there are 10 people that is in opposition, then you all have essentially a total of 20 minutes together. So you don't have to use that much, but we just wanted to let you know because there are a number of items on the list tonight. It can get very lengthy, so we just want to make sure we respect your time and everyone in this room time this evening. So at this particular time, is the applicant present for item number eight, Z-9988? All right, Torrance, if you will, can you provide the reading?
Is it possible to have the opposition speak first?
Yes, we will get to that.
Okay.
But I will make note of that, yes.
Do I just sit back down?
You can just wait right here, he's going to provide the reading here first.
The property owner requests to rezone the .31 acre property located at the northwest corner of Chico Road in Maple Vale Pike from R2 to C3. The rezoning is proposed to allow future commercial development to include commercial vehicle parking and equipment storage. The property is currently undeveloped and mostly grass covered. The city's future land use plan designate this property as C Commercial. The requested C3 zoning does not require an amendment to the plan. Staff does not support the requested C3 rezoning. The subject property is approximately .31 acre in size. Staff feels that the property is too small to allow potentially intense commercial development at this intersection. Staff also questions whether the applicant's intent for the property, commercial vehicle parking and equipment storage would even be permitted in C3 zoning. Staff recommends denial of the C3 rezoning.
Thank you. All right, applicant, please step to the podium and please state your name for the record.
My name is Dale Dean Elawan. I can spell that if you need.
All right, so at this particular time, you do not have any opposition on, on record here. So if you like to, definitely you can present the staff. You heard the staff's recommendation, but you have the floor now to speak on your item, to tell the board, you know, about your project in more depth, and then we will proceed with questions thereafter.
All right. We're just trying to change it to a commercial so we can be able to park. We have a couple of vans, work vans. We're a service company and we just want to park them in our lot. We have the room to be able to park our vans, and we have a couple of trailers that we haul equipment sometimes with, and there is plenty of room for it on the property. We don't intend to build anything right now, maybe down the line 20 years or something, but we just want it so we can park our vans in there.
All right. At this time, I want to open the floor up to any commissioners that have any particular questions for the applicant at this particular time. Commissioner Brown, please, floor is yours.
Yes, C3 zoning is pretty intense and pretty broad. Is there any reason why you're requesting that versus say a PCD or something like that that would specifically say, hey, you can just park these here? What's, what's the reason for asking for such a broad zoning?
I mean, I'm not sure because what I was told is that we just want to be able to park our vans. We don't get any customers. Like I said, we're a service company, so we go out to the customers. The whole purpose of it is just to be able to park our vehicles and?
Right, but who, but who told you, I guess is my question, because you don't need C3 zoning just to park vans on it. And if you have C3 zoning there and say you sell it down the road, it can impact the neighbors thinking long-term, what's the driver between asking for C3?
I mean, we were recommended to do C3. If there is a way to be able to park our vans, we would just go with whatever commercial that would allow it, because we had some people from the city came to our property and told us we can't park our vans on the property unless it's a commercial.
Can staff comment on that?
We're rezoning part of the land to be commercial just so we can park our vehicles.
Sure, Commissioner Brown, this, this item came to us as the applicant stated as an enforcement issue.
Right.
So the applicant is trying to comply with, with, with the code regarding parking of commercial vehicles at the site. As far as I know, staff knows that's the only reason why he requested C3 zoning. Regarding your question about the intensity and use in another application type, you are correct, this would probably be better or more palatable if it was a PDC zoning where the scope is small in relationship to the number of vehicles parked. You know, maybe some screening required for the neighbors if, if the vans are going to be driven, if it's going to be driven, you know, at night or in the dark, you know, not to disturb the neighbors. So, I mean, the, the C3 zoning, again, is too intense. Staff feels a PDC zoning would be more adequate.
Thanks. I mean, yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking. Maybe it was, I don't know if it was a mix-up or your understanding of this, and I don't know if you got the invalid information or whatnot, but as I'm looking at this, even the, the lot width and, you know, of it doesn't comply with the code of, you know, 14,000 square feet, so you have under that. So that would implicate an issue on that particular matter alone. How many, currently, how many vehicles or commercial vehicles are there on that particular space or you have parked on that space as of today?
Two vans and four trailers.
Okay, and approximately what size was the length of those trailers?
The largest one is 20 feet, the smallest is 16.
Okay. All right. Any further questions from any commissioners?
I do.
The floor, go ahead. The floor is yours, Commissioner.
So I guess I would draw everybody's attention to the area zoning map. Currently, the neighboring property is zoned C3. The property to the immediate east across Chico Road is MF18. There's another MF18 Conditional Use Permit just north of that. There's another MF18 immediately to the south across Maple Vale Pike. There's another C3 Conditional Use Permit across Chico Road to the southeast. There's a C4, a PCD, another C4, which looks like a self-storage business down there by Frontage Road. It seems like what he's asking for is completely reasonable, given the pattern of development in the area. Now, if the use does not meet the minimum requirements of the C3 zone, then that's, that's a separate issue, but it doesn't seem like he's really asking for a lot. He's wanting to park two vans and, and a couple of trailers. I mean, if we're worried about disturbing the neighbors, I mean, I've never been disturbed by somebody pulling their car into a driveway at night, living in a residential zone. I'm really having a hard time to, to kind of find a justification on why staff is, is against this application other than the lot not meeting the minimum size requirements for a C3 zone.
Mr. Chair, just to pick up on what he said, isn't the future land use plan commercial? Doesn't it dictate that this turn into commercial at some point?
Yeah, staff, staff did mention that the future land use plan is commercial anyway, so he's simply asking for what the city already has planned for the area.
Yeah, I, I agree with your assessment, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner, thank you for your input. Did you have any other statements?
Nope.
Jeremiah? All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions for the applicant or statements from any other commissioners?
For staff, what's the minimum size requirement for C3?
Section 36-301 subsection E and subsection four lot area. It has to be 14,000 square feet with a lot width not less than 100 square, 100 feet.
What again is the size of this lot?
Size of this lot? It's 13,426 square feet.
Sounds like that's within a margin of error to me.
All right, if there's not any other questions here, the applicant has spoken. I would love to entertain a motion, and remember the motion, since staff voted against it, you know, we have to be in the affirmative on this motion.
I will make a motion to approve item number eight, file number Z9988 at, sorry, I'm looking for the address, 7616 North Chico Road, as submitted in the staff's agenda report without staff's recommendation of denial.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call for voting, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Lundey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Yay. Person? Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, applicant.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along here, we've got the next item is item number 10, Z-5817-N. Is the applicant present? All right, you can make your way to the podium, and we will have the reading.
Jess Griffin, 5 Kingston Drive, Little Rock, Arkansas.
The applicant proposes to rezone 3.803 acre property from PDO to PDC, excuse me, PCD. The property is located at the northeast corner of Cantrell Road and Rommel Road. The rezoning is to allow for a future commercial retail development with a main retail structure and a restaurant with drive-through service. The subject property is located in the Highway 10 Design Overlay District. The property is currently divided into three tracks with the majority of the property cleared and graded. Track number one is just over and half an acre at 0.58 acre. Or it's zoned R2, it's an undeveloped track, which is mostly wooded and located at the west border of the site adjacent to Rommel Road and north side of Cantrell Road. The second track, track two, is a PDO zoned, essentially located on the north side of Cantrell Road with the gravel access drive. Third track, track three, is located on the eastern edge of the overall site with the paved access connected to Cantrell Road to the south. The property is bordered to the east by commercially zoned properties and mostly R2 zoned properties to the north and the west across Rommel Road. To the south of the property across Cantrell Road is a mixture of residential and commercial zoned properties. The applicant is proposing a 15,000 square foot, 15,600 square foot commercial restaurant retail structure to be located within the northern portion of the property and a 3,200 square feet, square foot restaurant in the eastern portion of the development. Pay parking and internal access drive will be located along the front and sides of each building. The site plan indicates that internal drives will circle internal parking areas in the south and east portions of the development and accommodate a restaurant that will include a drive-through window at the east end of the retail center building. Staff is not supportive of the, of the overall proposed site development plan as submitted due to the following issue. Staff has requested that the applicant rezone the west portion of the property for which no development plan is shown to open space or remove it from the PZD request, PZD zoning request. The most recent site plan shows the west portion to be included in the PZD zoning. The applicant has noted the following. Our plan currently for this portion of the property is to sell it to the state of Arkansas. Staff subjects to the west portion of the property being included in the PCD zoning request. Staff recommends denial of the requested PCD zoning.
Thank you. Our applicant, please state your name for the record.
Jess Griffin.
All right, and Mr. Griffin, you do have one card in opposition. You can speak now or you can defer your time and come back afterwards, your choice.
I would like to defer my time.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have one card here, is Richard Stoker present? If so, please come to the podium. All right, please state your name, and the floor is yours.
My name is Richard Stoker. I live at 11 Countryside Cove in Little Rock. My house, I live in a subdivision that's connected to Rommel Road. My house is one of over 55 single-family residences using Rommel Road as their only ingress to their neighborhoods and egress to the rest of Little Rock. There are no other alternatives. I'm speaking in opposition to this application. It may help if we kind of go back and discuss some of the background. In 2020, after a previous proposal was denied by the City Board of Directors, a group of neighborhood representatives was created to work with Reese Commercial and act as liaisons to the neighborhoods that would be affected by development of this site. I am one of three neighborhood representatives of that group. Since September 2020, neighborhood representatives have spent many hours in meetings, discussions, and in documenting their concerns and suggestions. This was done in an effort to find a development proposal that could be supported by the neighbors. To date, no proposal has achieved that goal, but the applicant has continued to submit different proposals to the Planning Commission. In late 2022, the applicant stopped interacting with the Neighborhood Liaison Committee. From that point on, the new proposals submitted to the Planning Commission were a surprise to the neighbors who have a vested interest in these proposals. So let's look at this new proposal. Applicant is requesting the site be rezoned from PDO to PCD to allow for a future commercial retail development. This would be a change to the land use plan, which has this site zoned for suburban office and R2 residential. Previous analyses by the Planning Commission staff have recommended that the site is better suited for development fitting within the current zoning and land use plan than more intense commercial usage. Applicant is requesting all O1, O2, O3, and C1 permitted and conditional uses be allowed. Previous requests excluded specific business units that otherwise would have been allowed under the standard list for O1, O2, O3, and C1. No exceptions are included in this application. This is a change from what was previously communicated to the local neighbors, and it is a surprise. Applicant is requesting a drive-through restaurant on the east side of the site next door to an existing drive-through restaurant. Previous application documented the restaurant as dine-in only. Changing the restaurant to a drive-through affects traffic patterns around it. This is a traffic safety issue, and it is a surprise. Applicant is requesting two new driveway connections to Cantrell between Teziki's Restaurant and Rommel Road instead of just one connection requested by neighbors. City Master Street Plan specifies that only one driveway is warranted as frontage on Cantrell is less than the required 625 feet needed for two driveways. Lot frontage is estimated to be approximately 490 feet in this application. Two new driveways intersecting Cantrell in this limited frontage space created traffic safety issue, especially when considering that Rommel Road intersects Cantrell immediately to the west of the site, and Teziki's driveway intersects Cantrell immediately to the east. There is nothing that addresses what to do with the west side of the site. There is no proposed development for this part of the site as part of this application except that the applicant is requesting that permitted uses for this area be changed to O1, O2, O3, and C1 along with the rest. O1, O2, O3, and C1 along with the rest of the site. The application states that the intent is to sell this area to RDOT, but I can't imagine RDOT wanting anything other than a thin strip along Cantrell, which means Reese Commercial would then come back with an additional application to do something with the part RDOT doesn't want to buy. So why change the permitted uses at this time when there's no indication of how this part of the site will be used? Additionally, what happens when the new application is submitted? If there is no request for zoning change at that time because it was already changed as part of this application, would it go before the planning commission and get the same level of review as this application? Would it go before the planning commission at all? If the answer to that question is no, then I do not think the zoning for this RDOT section of the site should be changed now. Let's wait until the new application tells us what we are dealing with. And as stated before, planning staff recommends that the western side of this site be changed to a zoning of open space. Staff recommends denial of the requested PCD zoning. I agree with planning commission staff and ask that the planning commission deny this application. Thank you for your time, any questions?
Thanks again.
No questions? Thank you, Mrs. Stoker. All right, can we have the applicant please come back up? And you can address any of the concerns by opposition and you can make any statements upon your time. Your time starts now, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I guess I want to take a step back first and just say, we're asking for a shopping center and a restaurant on Highway 10, which is the busiest non freeway road in the state. So you got 40,000 cars somewhere around that passing the site a day and we're asking to put a shopping center and a restaurant, which to me makes perfect sense. We've also, this is our 14th attempt. We've gone through several iterations. If you own this land, do you want to go through 14 times of different ideas of trying to make something work with the neighborhood and with the staff? And I'm worn out at this point, but I thought this one was the ticket. We completely did a development with nothing on, there's three tracks and we had nothing planned for the very western track. And we are in negotiations with the highway department to try to sell that track to them. My client just told me that he has received an offer for them and they're in negotiations for that western track. I guess the staff was against it because of that western track, we were asking to rezone it, but it just makes sense. If you own a property, you would want to rezone the whole property. You don't want to rezone a part of the property and then make part of it open space. I mean, no one wants to rezone highly valued commercial property, open space. That doesn't make any sense. Other thing is about the traffic study, he said the traffic is unsafe, there's a problem with the traffic. We've presented a traffic study to the city of Little Rock with this application. I didn't see any opposition or any negative comment about the traffic. We have worked closely with the highway department on the driveway locations. I guess I can go through the variances. We're asking for, um, variances on the driveways because of the distance between the driveways from the property adjacent and if you're asking for two driveways, they say you have to have, um, 625 feet of frontage and I think we have a little bit less than that. But as I see it, the highway department controls the driveways and what driveways go on a state highway and we have worked out where we have the driveways located and they are happy with that. And we, this is, this was done years ago. We've been working on this since 2020. And then there's a buffer variance we're asking for where you can't clear more than 30% or it says a minimum of 70% of the land buffer be undisturbed. Well, we're having to dig into a hill and we have to basically cut all of that to make all the grading work. And so there's no way physically possible to build the site and maintain an undisturbed buffer at the rear of the property. One thing also I would like to note is that we are asking for wall heights greater than 15 feet. If you look at Teziki's next door, they've got one-to-one slope of just cut slope with no wall or anything and it's more than probably 30 feet. So we really just want to do something similar to what the neighbor has done. I want to make sure that we do get on the record that I do want a variance from the 15-foot height restriction and the block face restriction. It says that, it notes that in here, but then it says all retaining wall construction must comply with the city code standards and, but what we've proposed won't comply with the standards. So I want to make sure that we will be able to build this and that's noted that we get a variance for that. Also, a similar circumstance with this wall, if you've been to the New Life Church out off Chanel Valley Drive or Chanel Parkway, they have like a rock face cut and it's 40, it's, it's, it's very tall. And basically on our site, we have rock and we're dealing with shale rock and we're going to have to, uh, get special equipment probably to excavate it. So we're asking that we don't need a wall, we don't need to put block in because it's going to be rock. And I'm going to work closely with a geotechnical engineer and myself and we're going to make sure that it's going to be safe and sturdy. Also, I think that's all the variances that we're asking for. And it seems that the staff was only opposed to this because of the western track, which we're out, we're trying to sell to the highway department and we're in negotiations with them. And I'll answer any questions that y'all might have on this property.
All right, thank you. I got a quick, just a question for staff. The applicant stated on, as far as on the driveway square footage. Staff, what was the square footage of that? It was stated, he stated about, he didn't know the exact square, the driveway square footage, I guess on the matter?
I have to say, I thought you said Scott, I'm sorry. Any questions that are not zoning or use? I would defer those questions to our civil engineer, Christopher Smith regarding walls, driveways, waivers to, uh, any waiver to a variance request for anything other than zoning and use.
Thank you. I want to open up to any questions to any commissioners this particular time. Before I do, Brad?
Mr. Chair, I did, I did have a question. The applicant mentioned variances, um, about the project. Our staff report says no variances. Mr. Thrower, is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. City Attorney, can the applicant request variances at the podium when none were requested?
I, I don't believe so unless there was notice sent out prior.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the floor up to any commissioners if you have any particular questions or statements at this time.
I have some. So similar to the previous application, I'm simply going to point us all back to the zoning area map. The predominant pattern of development in this area is PDC, PDO, PDO, POD, POD, PCD, PCD, POD, POD, PCD, PCD, PCD. This applicant is not asking for anything that is outside the pattern of development within this area. We've all been up and down this section of Cantrell Road before. This, this development is not going to make Cantrell Road any more or less busy than it already is. It's a state highway, it's Highway 10. You know, it sucks driving out there, but this is a commercial district. I can't speak to the variances for the wall height limit. You know, staff, can you clarify that that is actually a planning commission variance that they're asking for? Or is that a building code issue? Is that a structural issue or is that a, is that a zoning issue?
First things first, Commissioner Russell. It appears to be maybe a typo on the cover page, block page that says no variances or requested on page 10. It does say the applicant has requested a variance from the regulations about the access drives and also the applicant has requested a variance from the regulations to allow two access drives. So I want to make that clear, those variances are there. Again, any question regarding walls, rights of ways, driveways, distance between driveways, width length, I would defer those questions to our civil engineer, Christopher, Christopher Smith.
Mr. Chair, I think you had a question about that. Is Chris on? I saw him earlier, I don't, I don't see his name now.
Chris Smith was on earlier. Chris, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, the applicant, excuse me, the, the commission has questions regarding driveways, walls, and things of that nature that's outside of zoning and use. They need you to answer those questions regarding driveway, driveway spacing and walls and the variances requested regarding those.
My only question is, are, are those, are those zoning issues that would be handled by this body or is that a separate issue not germane to the application as, as we see it?
Commissioner Russell, that would be handled by this body and reviewing this with the city attorney, this was stated in, in the, in the write-up, so looks like they're all good.
Okay. Okay, great. Then I'll simply stand by my statement that, you know, the, the applicant is not asking for anything that has not already been done within spitting distance of their property line.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Any other particular questions or statements?
A question for Mr. Stoker. Mr. Stoker, are you still present?
Mr. Stoker, can you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Give me a minute or two minute snapshot of that communication breakdown. So the city board requested that you communicate with developer. And you said it, communication broke down, was it two years ago?
Two years ago. Actually, it was at the request of the developer that we get a committee of liaison with the neighborhoods. And we, we said, yeah, it's a great idea. And we worked for two years and then about two years ago, I don't know why, we, we used to get some, some early notifications of what they would come back and propose, but that communication just went away.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a follow-up question on that? I know at one point this application, um, in the past included a connection to Rommel Road. Is it possible that after that connection was taken away and taken out of the site plan, that that's when the developer no longer communicated with the, the neighborhood to the north? Did it coincide with that?
We, we had actually gotten that connection to Rommel Road removed before that and we were just trying to get happy with the proposed development of that site. Now, yeah, I, I guess the Rommel Road thing may still be a question somewhere because when they graded that lot, if you look at it driving west on Highway 10, there's a deep trench going up towards Rommel, almost like someone was planning on a connection. But right now, there is no plans related to connecting that to, to Rommel.
Satisfying you, Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Stoker.
Thank you.
I got a quick question for the applicant. You stated that you all actually have a buyer for this particular piece of land? Is that, did I hear that correctly? I just wanted to make sure that I hear that. So is, is, what I guess my question is, so would y'all be possibly looking, is that perhaps y'all could be looking to sell this tract of land?
I'm John Reese, the owner of the property and yes, we've been in contact and negotiations with RDOT for the last three or four months and we have an offer to sell that property. I'm not quite agreement with their price and so I'm negotiating and determining if I'm going to need to get an attorney or not. Hopefully we can just work something out, but that property is going to be bought by them. They're going to use it for staging and they're also buying the front 30 feet or so of my property all the way up. And so one reason that we've had to reduce the size of the property is because we don't have the depth anymore if we don't expand our land to the rear, that's to the north. So we're going to have to buy additional land up there, I think, which is shown on, on the plan that for us to do that, and we've got our permission from the owner, the north owner, Mr. Hughes, to purchase that additional land if we need it. And that's what we plan to do because we still want to develop a shopping center, but there, but because we've gone down from about 175 parking spaces to 125, we've had to reduce the size of our shopping center from about 22,000 or 23,000 feet down to 16 or so. So we've reduced that. We've gone from three restaurants, which we initially submitted to this board, which was approved about four or five years ago. It was approved, three restaurants with three driveways. And so we did meet with the, did meet with the neighborhood for probably two to two and a half years or so. And we worked with them extremely hard and we think we've, had come and we narrowed it down and told them what we needed and they, you know, we've gone back and forth and back and forth. And I told them on Rommel Road, if they didn't want the, the connection, that we would not have to require it, but Mr. Collins stated, no, you're going to have to have that. So we said, well, y'all fight it out. We don't care about it. The neighborhood doesn't want it. If the neighborhood don't want it, we're okay with it. Because we were just, we were just trying to get something approved so we could get, get going on this development that we've been working on for five years. So it's got six, you know, 40,000 cars going to be going up down, it's a six lane, going to be a six-lane highway all the way out. So it'll be the largest highway in the city of Little Rock. And, um, we think a small little, small, it's very small, 16,000, 17,000 feet shopping center would be an extremely good development right there with a restaurant right beside it. Initially, we had, we've had so many plans, we've had about, I think it's been 14 times that we've submitted things to this board. We got it approved a couple of times too, but we were rejected, but we have felt like we've talked to the city directors, which we know very well. And they said, we're, we're going to be for you this time. So I hope and the board will be for me too, because we develop a lot of good quality properties all over the city to on, and we've got property on Bowman Road, we've got two on Chanel Parkway, we've got, we've got two on Bowman Road, we've got Hinson Road, we've got property on, we've got property in Bryant. And we've got property right down the street at Taylor Loop Road that we're getting ready to develop as mini storage and office warehouse. And we've got those approved by this board and also the city, the board of directors. So we're doing a lot of development here. We'd like to get this little plan done and so we can move on and, and it's been a lot of, I mean, Dick's been here the entire time, he's been a trooper, I mean, showing up all the time. And, and the other two, you know, Gray and Don, they were involved and they did a good job trying to come to some middle ground and I appreciate their efforts to work with, work with us. And what we certainly appreciate, if we could get this done, we've talked to the state, they're going to buy the property. That's why we wanted to leave it the way it was. And when we talked to Mr. Collins, about two weeks ago, he said, John, I'll approve it, but I want you to take, make that OS. And I said, really, I can't do that because I want the state to know that it's valuable, not just... Not just, you're not just buying a piece of property, it's a commercial piece of property. And that's what we were going to build on it. So it should be commercial. And so, he said, well, if you're going to do that, I'm not going to approve it. That's the only reason he gave to not, to approve this development. And so, we were very disappointed in that decision. But anyway, that's what was made. And we are going to sell it. It's not going to be in our possession probably in six months. They're going to use it for staging. So please have mercy on us today. Get this approved. Thank you very much. Are you had questions? We can answer them.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, but it's for staff. So if you've got questions for John, they can.
Oh, no. Any questions for Mr. Reese?
Just total estimate. What's the cost you've incurred? Mr. Griffin, this might be for you as well. What's the cost you've incurred in these 14 attempts?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
What's the cost, the planning and development costs that, that you all have incurred in appearing here 14 times?
Oh my gosh, probably $50,000.
Thank you.
Because we've had, we, we've gone through one traffic study, and then the last time, we said we've already done one, but they had run out. So we had to go back and, and have another one done. So that was about $10,000, just on those two things. Plus, all the time that Jess has spent on it, and he's spent lots of hours and hours and hours, we did. We've done, you know, like 10 or 15, you go through my email. We got one development design after another, showing all the things we've tried to get, tried to work out. I know we haven't come to exactly what the neighborhood wants, but we thought we'd come as close as we possibly could. And, and this time, we thought this would be a slam dunk, because we took that whole property away. And we reduced the size. So we thought, gosh, why can't we get, why can't we get this done on a road that's going to have 60, 50, 40 or 50,000 cars on it? So, and the state has agreed to let us have the two driveways. And that's their kind of discretion, you know, Highway 10 is a state highway. So, you know, this will make some money for the city. It's not just going to be land out there. It's going to make money, because it's going to be commercial, hopefully. So that's what we're out there trying to do. We're trying to develop good quality projects. And we think this will be one, once we get it developed. And we'd appreciate your help.
Michael, my, my only question was, because we're about to have a, a motion on this. So the confusion about the variances, when, when we, when the motion is made, there will be variances that are included in the write-up, correct? We don't want to send something to the board that's all messed up because of the.
Yes, I'm, I'm reading over it right now, Commissioner. And there are variances listed on here. It was a typo.
Okay, okay. So this would just be a normal motion, like we would normally make? We don't have to address variances or anything like that?
Absolutely, normal motions.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hart.
I just had one, the only thing that confused me when I read the write-up was that we've submitted a, this is a plan development, and we've submitted a proposal to have walls in excess of 15 feet. And we've also submitted a proposal to not have a block face wall, because we're digging into rock. But then, at the final line in the write-up, it said that all walls must be constructed per city code. And so, I wanted, we've submitted a plan that shows something different, but then I don't want to get to the tail end, and then y'all enforce the city code and say, oh, you didn't get the variance. And so that's why I pointed that out, is that we've submitted a plan for this, and I want to get what we submitted, not what the city code says. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, did you all have any other statements that you were trying to complete? I mean, just the other variance that I noticed on page 11. He's also asking for a variance regarding the buffer. There on page 10, excuse me, 11. Section 36521 requires a minimum of 70% of the land use buffers to be undisturbed. The applicant notes that more than 30% of the required buffers will be disturbed, and has requested a variance from the regulations to allow 100% of the land use buffer requirement along the north perimeter of the site to be disturbed. I'm only mentioning that because, like the applicant is saying, I want to be sure that all of the variances they are requesting has been addressed, and won't be time for them later to come back regarding any variances. So I wanted to clear that up.
So you're saying that it has been addressed to the applicant?
Yes, the variances that the applicant has asked for has been addressed in the staff report.
Okay.
That's the point I want to make.
And are you saying that the applicant did or did not adhere to that, based on the documents you have?
Well, the, the variance he's requesting, if the body approves this application, he will be also, the variances will also be approved with the application.
No, I'm saying as far as code-wise, as far as the codes, the, the verifications on the documents that you received and the ones you just read.
Yes, the only typo that I see is, is on the front page, it says none requested. So I want to be clear that, as the applicant stated, the variances that they're requesting is in the write-up.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for any other commissioners? If not, I would love to entertain a motion for this item.
Make a, make a motion to approve the application as submitted in the staff, agenda staff report, with the exclusion of staff's recommendation for denial.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Get a roll call for voting, please.
Brown.
Mr. Brown has to abstain.
Hart.
Yes.
Hodges.
Abstain.
Lundey.
Yes.
McDonald.
I have to abstain, because I wasn't able to hear everything.
Person. Samad.
Yes.
Vogel. Baxter.
Yes.
Russell.
Aye.
Vickers.
No.
Five yes, one no, two absent, two abstain.
So that's, the motion fails? Yes, of the abstentions?
Yes, the, the applicant needs a minimum of six votes to, for the motion to, to carry.
Can I take?
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion to expunge the previous vote and reopen the application for discussion, so that Commissioner McDonald can ask questions to clarify and cast her vote.
Sir, can. Let me, let me step in, because I don't, I don't want to apprehend Commissioner McDonald. If you feel comfortable with that, Commissioner McDonald, you can. If you stand beside your judgment, you can as well.
I had to abstain, because I had very poor signal, so I wasn't able to hear anything.
You wasn't able to hear any of the, anything on that item?
Chair, a motion has been made and seconded.
No, I, no, I understand that. I'm saying is, I'm trying to understand, did she hear anything? Or she said she didn't hear all of it? So now she's saying she didn't hear anything. So, in, in that case, staff, if she didn't hear anything, then, I mean, I would feel, Mr. Fieden, at least she have some type of understanding to the, you know, to the item. She said, she just stated she didn't hear anything. So if she didn't hear anything, then we would have to get all of her questions answered, or actually go back through the, the item. I mean, those are the two options. Commissioner McDonald, you said you didn't hear anything on that item?
I came in at the very tail end. I'm sorry, I've, I've been trying to get a good signal.
No, I understand. No, it's, it's just technical difficulties. We, we understand that. If, if the commissioner did not hear this, and, you know, out of, you know, sheer, just fairness, we would need to let the commissioner hear this, so that she can make an informed decision and vote on this item.
Yes, I believe I agree with that. That's out of fairness, because Commissioner McDonald's vote was abstention, because she didn't hear it, and the, and it failed. And to Commissioner Russell's point, there is a motion and second on the table, so.
Yes, because I was under the pressure, she didn't hear certain parts of whatnot. But even in that, we still want to make sure she, she has an informed decision on her vote. So at this time, Commissioner McDonald, can you hear us loud and clear?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, and, and I know we have a motion on the table at this present time, due to the fact that one of the commissioners did not get a fair and equal opportunity to vote. I'm going to make an executive decision that we're going to have to have a reading over on this item number, so that Commissioner McDonald can have a fair vote on this item number. So, at this particular time, and what I want to do is, we can move forward along without the original steps. But Commissioner McDonald at least needs to, she needs to hear the reading, understand it. And if she have any questions for the applicant, or any questions for the opposition, she can definitely ask those questions. So at this particular time, and what I will allow is, I will allow the applicant to come up, and if you want to make your statement for two minutes, and then the opposition for two minutes or less. So each one to have two minutes or less. You don't have to use the full, but just make a brief summary, so that Commissioner McDonald can ask the, the proper questions she have, so she can make the informed decision vote. So at this time.
Mr. Chair, as a, Mr. Chair, as a point of order.
Commissioner Russell, go ahead.
As a point of order, the application has been heard. It has been voted by roll call. It failed. In order for us to rehear the application, the motion that is currently on the table and has been seconded must be voted on and approved in order for us to rehear this application. That is a statutory requirement as a governing body.
Oh, sir, as, as this board, as chairman of this board, I can rescind, and I can make an executive order and decision based on need be, on certain, on certain variances. If it's dealing with something that's unfair or inequality, then the chairman has the right and authority, according to the rules, that they can make an executive decision and order on that. Now, I can do that.
I would, I would respectfully disagree with that, and I, I think the order, the, the record needs to be, needs to be clear on this issue, considering that it's been heard 14 times already.
No, Commissioner, it hasn't been heard 14 times today. I think the applicant was speaking over the terms of years. What I'm saying is, I can make an executive order and decision based upon need be to conduct order in this meeting.
But, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, by my, by my reading of the bylaws, because there was a vote made and a motion and a second for an expunging action, I, I think that we do have to have a, a vote on that expungement before we can reopen discussion.
Are you saying, are you saying that because we made a motion, and then we, then we had a commissioner make another motion, and then we had confusion based upon?
And, and it could be that I'm a bit confused as to where we're at right now, but my, my understanding is that there was a motion and a second for an expungement.
Okay, just do this for the record and for time. Are you saying that we need to vote on the motion on the table?
On, on, on the motion for the expungement of the previous vote, yes.
I think y'all are both talking about doing the same thing, which is re-voting on this item.
Yeah, well, well, first of all, let me just say, for the record, if there's been a confusion or something, this in a chaotic format, and the commissioner cannot make an informed decision to vote based upon technical difficulty, technical difficulties or other variables, then, as chairman, I can make sure that, because if we're going back and we're making a motion on this, then all that supersedes of what we're initially stating, right? So if the commissioner did not make a vote, or she was not able to make a vote based upon the initial motion, then all of that is null and void. Does that make sense what I'm saying for the city attorney? Or if you're saying that we need to do this motion to go back and redo it based upon that, then I will.
Yes, because there was a vote made, I, I just think for the, the clarity of the record, because we've, we've made a vote on the item, and there was a motion to expunge in a second, I think that we have to vote on the expungement before we can go back.
Oh, fine. If, based on the city attorney, we had a motion on the table to expunge the first motion, and to go back and reopen? I'm sorry, Commissioner?
We're, we're expunging the vote, not the motion.
All right, so we had a motion to expunge the vote. And, and we're going back to reopen the case. Am I correct in saying that, City Attorney?
Yes.
All right, so we had a, we had a motion and a second. So can we get a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Brown is abstaining. Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Lundey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person. Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Been espunged.
Okay, so now, the vote, or the decision vote has been expunged. So now we want to go back and reopen, so we don't have to make a motion to that. As chair, I'm saying that we're going to go back and we're going to do the reading, because there were technical difficulties, and to be fair, and for Commissioner McDonald, we're going to go back and do the reading. We will have two minutes for the applicant, we will have two minutes for the opposition. And Commissioner McDonald can ask any questions that she deems to make an informed decision vote. All right, I want to clear something up first. It was on the first page, Commissioner McDonald, can you hear me? All right.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, on the first page, it says variances, a wave is requested. There's a typo, it says none. There are variances requested, and I'll go over those soon as I get to them in the reading. The applicant proposes to rezone a 3.803 acre property from PDO to PCD. The property is located at the northwest corner of Cantrell Road and Rumel Road. The rezoning is to allow for future commercial retail development with a main retail structure and a restaurant with drive-through service. The subject property is located in the Highway 10 Design Overlay District. The property is currently divided into three tracks, with a majority of the property cleared and graded. Track one is a 0.58 acre R2 zone undeveloped track, which is mostly wooded, and is located on the west border of the site, adjacent to Rumel Road and north side of Cantrell Road. Track two is a PDO zone lot centrally located on the north side of Cantrell Road with a gravel access drive. Track three is located on the eastern edge of the overall site, with a paved access connecting to Cantrell Road to the south. The property is boarded to the east by commercially zoned properties, and mostly R2 zone properties to the north and west across Rumel Road. To the south of the property across Cantrell Road is a mixture of residential and commercial zoned properties. The applicant is proposing a 15,000 square foot commercial restaurant retail structure to be located within the northern portion of the property. And a 3,200 square foot restaurant in the eastern portion of the development. Paved parking and internal access drives will be located along the front and sides of the building, of each building. The site plan indicates that internal drives will circle internal parking areas in the south and east portions of the development, and accommodate a restaurant that will include drive, a drive-through window at the east end of the retail center building. Regarding the variances, on page 10, there's a variance that's requested regarding the drives, and how they match up with the arterial streets, not being, not complying with the, with the distance separation. There is another variance requested about the minimum spacing from the property line. The applicant has requested a variance from the regulations to allow two access routes from Cantrell Road to be separated by approximately 270 feet, and the eastern most driveway to be located approximately 65 feet from these property line. And on page 11, there's another variance that's requested regarding the land use buffer. Section 36521 requires a minimum of 70% of the land use buffers to be undisturbed. The applicant notes that more than 30% of the required buffers will be disturbed, and has requested a variance from the regulations to allow 100% of the land use buffer requirement along the north perimeter of the site to be disturbed. Staff is not supportive of the overall proposed site development plan as submitted due to the following issue. Staff has requested that the applicant rezone the west portion of the property, for which no development plan is shown to open space, or remove it from the PZD zoning request. The most recent site plan shows the west portion to be included in the PZD zoning. The applicant has noted following, noted the following, our plan. The applicant has noted following, noted the following, our plan currently for this portion of the property is to sell it to the Arkansas, state of Arkansas. Staff objects to the western portion of the property being included in the PCD zoning request. Staff recommends denial of the requested PCD zoning. That concludes the reading of, of this item.
Uh, thank you. At this particular time, I would like the applicant, if you so choose to, you, you can come up, you have two minutes, you can summarize it, unless there are questions or additional questions from Commissioner McDonald or any other commissioner that have any questions. So, if you'd like, you can come up and you make any summarize or statement thereof for particularly Commissioner McDonald, but obviously for the whole board.
Can I speak after the opposition as before?
Sure, that is, you have the right to do that. We only had one card in opposition here, and that was Mr. Stoker. Ms. Stoker, you have up to two minutes, if you'd like to summarize anything, particularly we're going back for, for the record for Commissioner McDonald, she had experienced technical difficulties and she could not hear the full item.
I understand. Is this mic on?
Yes, I believe we can hear you.
All right, Commissioner McDonald, if I would ask you if for any reason during this presentation, if you lose communication again, if you would raise your hand, I would appreciate it. All right, don't worry, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm going to focus on this application. Applicant is requesting site be rezoned from PDO to PCD to allow for future commercial retail development. This would be a change to the land use plan, which has the site zoned for suburban office and R2. Previous analyses by the planning commission staff have recommended that the site is better suited for development fitting the current zoning. Applicant is requesting all O1, O2, O3 and C1 permitted and conditional uses be allowed. Previous request excluded specific business uses that otherwise would have been allowed under the standard list of O1, O2, O3 and C1. No exceptions are included in this new application. Applicant is requesting a drive-through restaurant on the east side of the site next door to an existing drive-through restaurant. Previous application documented the restaurant as dine-in only. Changing the restaurant to a drive-through affects traffic patterns around it. This is a traffic safety issue. Applicant is requesting two new driveway connections to Cantrell between Teziki's Restaurant and Romo Road instead of just one new driveway as requested by neighbors. City Master Street Plan specifies that only one driveway is warranted as frontage on Cantrell is less than the required 625 feet. The lot frontage for this application is approximately 490 feet. Two new driveways intersecting Cantrell and limited frontage space create a traffic safety issue. There is nothing that addresses what to do with the west side of the site. There is no proposed development for that part, but the application is requesting that the permitted uses for the area be changed to O1, O2, O3 and C1 along with the rest of the site. The application states the intent is to sell the area to RDOT, but I can't imagine RDOT wanting anything other than a thin strip.
The two minutes have passed.
Well, I'll just quit.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoker. All right, the applicant, please come back up to the podium, and you have two minutes to make your statement, and then we will open the floor for Commissioner McDonald or any other commissioners with any additional questions.
We are asking to put a shopping center and a restaurant on Highway 10 where there's 40,000 cars a day, and we're not very close to any neighbors. There is a northern neighbor that has 40 acres of undeveloped, so there's a huge buffer between them and the neighbors, and we're asking for some variances mainly with driveways. The highway department has approved our driveway locations, who they control the state road there. There's no traffic safety issues, or the staff would have brought that up. They did not make any mention of traffic safety issues, and we're just, we've previously got a grading permit on this approved, and we've had several other iterations approved through the planning commission. This is the smallest impact and smallest development we've asked for up to this point. We have no development on the 1.1 and 1/2 acres, I believe, at the very west of this, which is closest to the neighbors, and so we're just asking for that. Do you have anything you want to add, John?
Yes, well, just to let Ms. McDonald know that we've gone, Ms. McDonald, from about 22 or 3,000 square feet to this, this design in this, of about 16,000 square feet in size, and we're going, we've gone from about, you know, we've had three restaurants, this board approved three restaurants about three, four, three years ago or four years ago, and we didn't get that through the, the, the Board of Directors, so we're coming back here, we reduced it from three restaurants to one restaurant and the shopping center, and the state will allow us to have the two driveways. They're the ones that control the state highway, Highway 10, and we've, we've met with the neighbors for the last two years, three years-
Time has elapsed.
-and feel like that, that we've tried to work out the best possible way to get, to get them what they wanted and what we needed so we can make the development work out. So we appreciate your vote, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. All right, for Commissioner McDonald or any other commissioners, if you have any other questions, Commissioner McDonald, if you have any particular questions at this time you can, or statements?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right, all right.
And for, just, just for, just for edification and for Commissioner McDonald's benefit, I'll restate my previous observation during the original reading that Commissioner McDonald, if you refer to the zoning map, you'll see that the predominant development pattern along that section of Cantrell is already either POD, PCD, or some form of commercial development. So, at least in my opinion, I don't feel as though they're asking for anything that is out of character with the neighborhood. Are there residences farther to the north off of Romo Road? Yes. Is it unfortunate that their access is from Cantrell? Probably, but this, this is within the normal pattern of development currently along that stretch of Cantrell Road.
All right, if there's no additional questioning, and I think staff is pulling, I think staff put it up, so everybody can review it or the commissioners can view it, if there's not any question, I would entertain a motion for this item.
I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted with the exception of staff's recommendation of denial.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Brown is abstaining. Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Abstain.
Lundey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person? Absent. Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Absent. Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
No.
Six? Yes, one no. Two abstain. Three abstain.
All right, so it looks like the motion passed. Thank you, applicant. And now we're going to move forward with the next item number 15. So we have item number 15, and that's S-1975, item 15, S-1975. If the applicant is present, you can make your way to the podium, and we will have
The applicant has requested preliminary plat approval to allow 37.25 acres of property located at the northwest corner of Valley Ranch Drive and Patrick Country Road to be subdivided into 164 lots for single-family residential development. The property is currently undeveloped and wooded with varying degrees of slope. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with the proposed preliminary plat. Staff is supportive of the proposed preliminary plat. The proposed single-family subdivision should have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary plat, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
That concludes the reading of this item. Thank you. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Brian Dale with Joe White and Associates, representing the applicant tonight. Good evening, chairman, commissioners. We would like to reserve our time for, to speak after the opposition.
All right, thank you. We do have a few cards here, and I would just call them in the order, and the first card is Wanda C. Merritt, if you're present. Please approach the podium, please.
Yes, good evening, chairman and planning commission. I am Wanda Merritt, and my husband and I reside at 206 Buckland Circle. As I reviewed the plans, it appears that this proposed subdivision is on the backside of my property as well as several properties on Buckland Circle. After reviewing the plans, I think that would certainly be a negative impact to the neighborhood in terms of 164 lots, but I would like consideration if the developer would consider maintaining some of the green space behind the homeowners on Buckland Circle. We know that with this many single-family units, 164 lots, that I think it's very important and imperative that there be a buffer and, and, and to keep the, in terms of a barrier for that many single-family properties, that, to ensure that the integrity of those living on Buckland Circle and the property again behind us will be maintained for, for noise We certainly know that green space is, is something that, that's important to homeowners, and perhaps if the developer would consider maintaining a reasonable amount of green space for the property owners on Buckland Circle, that would also be a positive, a positive layout for those properties in this sub, in the others, in the proposed subdivision, where they can have some green space as well. Again, with that many single-family homes, I think we, we do need a, a buffer, a barrier that would, again, maintain the integrity of those property owners living on Buckland Circle where this property butts up against our property. I would hope that the developer would, would consider this in, in terms of working with the neighbors and ensuring that, you know, that, that the neighbors have a say in this, and that we want to be good neighbors. We want to all get along, we don't want any strong opposition because certainly as the former director for the Department of Housing and Urban Development, I know homeownership is important. However, I think we do need to be good neighbors and consider a buffer for those homeowners on the backside of Buckland Circle. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next card we have is Randy Hughes, Randy Hoes. If you're available, please approach the podium. All right, we have one additional card here left, and we have Director BJ Warwick.
Thank you, guys. I am BJ Warwick, I'm the city director, and I am also the liaison to the planning commission. And I, like you, get phone calls and emails and questions about the items that you all see. I got a phone call this afternoon regarding this subdivision, and it has to do with boundary street improvements and master street improvements. And if you look at the plan, there is Patrick County Road that, according to our ordinances, the way I understand them, or the way that they were told to me, is that there should be half-street improvements done on, on Patrick County Road. Even though the lots do not abut Patrick County Road, when you go from meets and bounds to tracks, then that does constitute the boundary street improvements. So I was hopeful that, I tried to talk to the city attorney today, and I understand Sean Overton is not well, not here today, and we have a new attorney, and so I spoke with him about it, just to get clarification as to whether boundary street improvements are, are, should be, should be taken care of on this property. I do know that the development is doing some INLU work on Valley Ranch Drive, but I don't know if that follows the letter of the law for the city. And one of the things that I worry about is we're constantly looking for dollars for infrastructure, and if it is something that a developer should take care of, then I would like that socialized and understood, and if it is, then we should, we should plan for it on, on this application, or it should come to the city board for a waiver or whatever the determination is. So that's, that's where I am. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I tried to explain it the way it was explained to me. I don't know if our city attorney has gotten an answer for us or where he is with it, so you guys kind of direct me on what, what next to do.
Chris, could you explain the, the boundary street rules to, to all of us in here in the room, just so we can get a better understanding? She, Director Warwick is referring to, excuse me, the Patrick County Road. It looks like, it does look to extend, but it is not completed all the way. That's where the secondary access is, so can you speak to boundary street improvements?
It's, it's 31.201 is the section of the code that was referred to me, and I'm sure he already knows that, but I thought I would give that to you so you don't have to look for it.
Yeah, I can do my best to explain it. Per the city code, as the director mentioned, they are required to do the boundary street improvements, and staff cannot waive that requirement. We can reduce the requirement, we can't fully waive it. That's the sole authority of the mayor of the city of Little Rock, if he chooses to do so. I'm not familiar with doing INLU on Valley Ranch Drive. Even if they do INLU, it has to meet certain requirements as the code outlines before staff can accept that. But in general, yes, they're required to do the boundary street improvements that, that is adjacent to their property frontage per this boundary street ordinance.
And, and we are talking about the county, Patrick County Road? Patrick County Farm Road or Patrick County Road? Is that what you're speaking to, Chris?
Mainly speaking about Valley Ranch Drive. I'm, I'm not aware of the INLU they're, they're requesting, but it had to be, it had to meet this current city code to, for staff can accept that on the boundary street improvements required on Valley Ranch Drive. On the secondary road, Patrick Country Road, think I can read that?
Yeah, that's what it says.
I'd have to do some more research on, is that currently on the master street plan?
It is a master street plan.
Okay, yeah, unless they're, they get a waiver from the mayor, or they meet a certain INLU requirements and not doing it, or they pursue another option of abandoning that right-of-way, they would be required to do, do the improvements.
Okay, so that would need to come to the city board then?
They're required to do it per code as of right now, unless they get a waiver or city staff reduces that requirement, or they pursue another option such as abandoning the right-of-way.
Okay, so that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. All right, we have the applicant, please come back up to the podium. All right, the floor is yours to address any of the concerns from opposition and to make your statement.
Thank you. The subdivision to the east is a part of the ranch neighborhood. It is zoned R2. Our neighborhood's zoned R2. We're not aware of any requirement to buffer R2 from R2. This property's always been zoned R2. This property's always been zoned R2. If there was to be a buffer, the neighborhood to the east didn't provide a buffer either. We're, again, not sure of a buffer when you're buffering residential or R2 to R2. As for the master street plan or Patrick Country Road, we have requested an In-Lu contribution. The neighborhood to the southwest asked us if we would consider building the rest of Valley Ranch Drive up to our entrance. We visited with the planning staff about it. We talked about safety. We talked about how it would be better to have a full road up to our entrance instead of having 600 feet of Valley Ranch Drive on one side and then turning around and having only 200 or 300 feet of Valley Ranch Drive extend past our entrance to nowhere. If the master street plan could be pulled up, which I'm not sure if it can, it doesn't stay in the alignment of Patrick Country Road that's shown on that drawing. The master street plan actually curves to the west and goes up towards that ridgeline. And so even if the developer were to build the master street plan, they're, they're building, they would be building less than what they are proposing right now with the In-Lu contribution. So we're not asking for a variance, we're not asking for a waiver. We're asking for an In-Lu contribution to build 600 feet of Valley Ranch Drive instead of 300 feet of Patrick Country Road. Again, it's for safety, it's to have a complete street, it's for aesthetics. It's, it's, it's to help the neighborhood to the southwest that required it. We're trying to be a good neighbor and get along. So that's all I have on that. I think Scott Hurley, one of the developers representative, would like to come up and maybe say a few things. I don't know if any Commissioners have anything else for me. I'll be available if there's any questions after Scott's done.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I do have a note, I just, I failed to read it from a meeting yesterday. I just didn't insert it. Since there's, Brian mentioned it, it just kind of rung a bell for me and the note says staff inadvertently left this out of the staff report that the applicant will make an In-Lu contribution to the future construction of Valley Ranch Drive. We know that is now 600 linear feet and that's what the applicant was referencing earlier.
Thank you for putting that on the record here. All right, yes, sir. Please state your name for the record and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Scott Hurley and I've been helping develop residential neighborhoods here in Little Rock for about 19 years and we're excited to hopefully bring this one in front of you as well. I think it's really simple. We're trying to develop some residential lots on some residential land. I really just wanted to highlight that we have worked tirelessly with the city staff who's been helpful. I've reached out to both POAs of the neighboring subdivisions as well as some individuals and although it was not feasible for the buffer, we did explore it. We did everything that we could. What I did offer was in our application, the ability to put up a 10-foot fence that would, that would divide our property from the ranch's property. So, you know, we always try and give concessions where we can. We've got a fence that's going to enhance the privacy. And then in visiting with the neighborhood, I think it's Valley Ranch to the southwest, their biggest concern was the road leading up past theirs and into ours. And that's a 600-foot section that we're offering to improve. So I just want to make sure everybody knew we reached out, we're conceding where we can. It's residential land surrounded by two residential properties and then two more multifamily properties. So it seems to be a pretty good fit and I think it'll be another good project for the City of Little Rock.
Thank you. All right, I want to open the floor up to the Commissioners. Do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
My question I guess is for staff. Does the new information presented by Director Warwick, would that have had any impact on staff's recommendations if you'd had it before? Because it sounds like that was relatively new info that was put together, that was, that was brought to light after the recommendation was written up. Would that have changed it at all? Or is it even susceptible?
Certainly the-
He's asking if you knew about staff's recommendation in that, that piece that they inserted a minute ago. If that would have changed your position.
I'm not aware of what staff, oh, you're talking about the In-Lu?
Yes, ma'am. I, I have a note and it, it says that if it's, if this item remained on consent, you insert it. If it, if it goes to, if it goes, if off consent to insert it somewhere. In the mix-up, I failed to mention that staff inadvertently left this out of the staff report that the applicant will make an In-Lu contribution for the future construction of Valley Ranch Drive, about 600 linear feet.
This is the Patrick County Road that abuts the Track A and Mr. Chris is probably the one that needs to answer that. I did hear him say something about In-Lu. I'm not here to create an issue. I'm just here to try to understand how this should be happening because we've had problems with the master street plan in the past, boundary street improvements and I just want to make sure that we're doing, we're doing the right thing. So I think Chris said that, that the street had to be built, but maybe we should hear him again.
Yes, Director Warwick, under the code it'd have to be unless they propose to do an In-Lu option such as this, but it'd still have to meet the requirements that the In-Lu payment that they're requesting before we can accept that.
So that would have to do In-Lu on the Patrick County Farm Road as well?
Yes.
That's a possibility that they could do that?
That's a possibility, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but it is the responsibility of the developer to do that?
Under the current boundary street ordinance, yes.
Okay, okay, that's what I was trying to get to. Thank you.
All right, any other Commissioners have any questions or statements? If not, I would-
Staff, can y'all, so is this application as submitted? Is it ready to be voted upon with no contribution on Patrick? Because we just heard our city engineer say that it was required, but it's not part of this application? Am I, is that correct?
No, we've, we've offered 600 feet instead of 300 feet. So we're doubling what the requirement is. The developer has offered 600 feet of half-street instead of the 300 feet of half-street that's required. So you're, you're getting double what's required.
On Patrick County Road?
Valley Ranch Drive curves into Patrick Country Road, so it's essentially the same street and we're completing the other half of Valley Ranch.
Staff, you're, you're comfortable that this, this meets the ordinance? This application as submitted meets the ordinance?
Yes, sir. We're, we are comfortable of the, of the In-Lu, but I mean to Mr. Smith's point, the boundary street requirement is, is something that we are bound to. And to your question, Mr. Brown, would that have changed our, our consideration? It may have. But it seems that they are offering to do more than what they would be required to do.
All right, so no other questions from any Commissioners or statements? If not, I would love to entertain a motion for this item.
Make a motion to approve as submitted with all staff's recommendations in the staff's report.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. May I get a roll call, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Lundey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Applicant, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, we're going to move right, right along here with item number 23. That's item number 23Z-3612-B. Is the applicant present for that item? If so, please make your way to the podium while we provide the reading. It's a throw if you will.
All right. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from C3 to PCD to allow a digital pile on signed billboard at the northeast corner of North Rodney Param Road and Breckenridge Drive. The applicant is requesting C3 permitted uses as alternate uses for the property. Property is located at the northwest corner Rodney Param Road and Breckenridge Drive. Site contains an existing bank branch. Properties in the general area contain a mixture of zoning and uses in all directions. Proposed billboard sign will have an overall height not to exceed 35 feet. The signed face, the signed face will be 12 feet by 36 feet in area. Billboard sign will be the only change to the property. The applicant is requesting C3 permitted uses as alternate uses for the property. The site plan shows the billboard again at the same intersection at Rodney Param Road and Breckenridge Drive and between the front, it's the north property line and the 25-foot setback. Typically, the ordinance requires off-premises signs to be set back 25 feet from the front property line in C3 zoning. Typical ordinance requirements allow billboard signs to be located no less than 1,000 feet from another billboard sign. The proposed billboard sign is approximately 730 feet as measured from an existing billboard sign to the east. Section 36-556, subsection A and 4, all premises sign states no billboard site shall be located less than 1,000 feet from another billboard site. Separation requirement shall be measured along the nearest edge of the pavement between points directly opposite the signs provided that only on streets separated by median, which this doesn't have, each of the sides of the street, each side of the street shall be considered separately, separately for distance purposes. The applicant provided the following statement in support of the requested reduction from an existing billboard sign. The intersection and the area around it are seeing many changes and reinvestments since the devastating tornado on March 13, 2023. The sign would be a part of that reinvestment and provide another opportunity for businesses in the area to be seen that are in fact well over 25 current and future businesses in Colony West Shopping Center and Breckenridge Village who will be able to benefit from the additional exposure being on this sign. Staff is not supportive of the requested location of the billboard sign. The proposed billboard sign does not comply with typical setback or typical separation requirements for off-premises signs. Staff also feels the billboard sign may create traffic concerns regarding site distance at the intersection. Staff recommends denial of the requested PCD zoning.
All right, thank you. There are not any cards in opposition for this item. So at this particular time, sir, please state your name for the record and the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Yates. I represent Sherman Holdings, the property owner. Mr. Sherman is, lives out of state. The property's been held by the family for 50-ish years since it was originally developed, still is. But I am here representing Mr. Sherman and Mr. Sherman and Mr. Joe Miller who's here with me have formed a venture for the billboard. Mr. Miller will be available to answer any questions you might have that are technical to the billboard application. Want to make just one quick point of clarification here. I'm not sure of the terminology usage. Our application, the intention is for this use to be an additional use to the C3 use, not an alternate use. We're looking to combine the existing Regent's Bank branch, which is under lease there, with this application. So the, it's, it's an additional use to the existing C3 use, it's not an alternate use. We wouldn't, in other words, we're not looking to take the bank branch away. So this location more than meets the setback requirements for Rodney Param. There is a variance request for the setback from Breckenridge Drive. The Breckenridge Drive setback serves to put as much distance between this location of billboard location proposed and the existing one further east on Rodney Param. Now, it also serves to line up with the mature oak tree shown on the site plan there that is at the entry drive from Breckenridge, which creates an opportunity to provide screening of the billboard from the Colony West neighborhood to the north. So the request for that variance serves multiple purposes. The request for the variance from the distance between the two billboards, the next nearest one to the east, this is the best site to provide for that along Rodney Param. The distance from this billboard to the next billboard to the west is over 2,600 feet. So all combined, over 3,000 feet. There would be the separation of three billboards. Three billboards over, over 3,000 feet. This site cannot be any further west because of the intersection with Interstate 430. So keeping the distance from Interstate 430 and maximizing the distance from the existing billboard to the east puts us in this location. Staff does have a comment relative to line of sight and I do have an exhibit that I'm glad to pass around to any Commissioners that want to ask for it at any point that illustrates the height of the bottom of the billboard is well above any line of sight issue for any traveler whether they're in, on a scooter or whether they're in a big box truck. It's, the bottom of the sign's going to be 20 feet in the air and be well above any line of sight issue. So in summary, this application expressly fits within the surrounding commercial properties. This is a, a retail and commercial node. It's an intersection of an arterial street and an interstate highway and it's the best potential location for a billboard in the area.
Well, if, if that's all, do we have any other?
Mr. Miller would like to say a few words.
Mr. Miller, please approach the podium.
Thank you, Jeff. He said it great, I think. I just want to give some background. So I own Cigar Republic, which is directly behind this property. I've been there for six years now and as you all know, the tornado hit last year. A buddy of mine came up to me after the tornado and said, you know, there were four trees in this area, we're proposing this billboard. He goes, they're gone now, the tornado took them. He said, you should put up a billboard there. Do you know your neighbor? I said, no, but I can try to meet him. So that's how this relationship started between myself and Brad Sherman, the owner of the property. And we've tried to work with the city on several levels of this. We, we think we have a good proposal. We definitely feel like this neighborhood, this, we're going to call it an economic corridor with the investment by the Keats across the street at Breckenridge, with the, with the Kroger Shopping Center getting pretty much torn down to shreds and redone. The gas station next to us has already cut through my property twice to fix the gas lines. That's all being redone. The whole place is being redone. And this would fit with what's happening there and allow these businesses who don't have street frontage to build, advertise there. And I will give discounts to them. I'm going to help Brad manage it. We want to give first rights to all the local businesses before we open up to others. And I think it'll be good for the community. Thank you for considering our application.
Thank you. All right, at this particular time, I'll open the floor up to any Commissioners. If they have any particular questions for the applicant or statements.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Staff, one of the, one of the reasons for the recommendation of denial is a concern about site distance at the intersection. Can you please explain that?
From me, just have had it regarding the site distance. It's pretty much what we determined to be a, a safety issue. I understand it's going to be a digital billboard sign. Is that right, Mr. Yates?
Yes, sir.
Right, but I guess my, my issue is it's, it's a, it's a billboard. So it's not going to be attached to the ground. So generally billboards have some sort of a pile structure, which is usually not more than 24 to 36 inches in, in total diameter. So I'm just wondering what the real issue with-
I mean, sir, let me, you know, I understand your point.
Interruption of, yeah.
No, I understand your point. We're, we're, obviously if something's 36 feet high in the air, nobody's driving around a 36-foot tall car. I mean, that's kind of common sense, Commissioner also. But- But, but we're just trying to comply with the code regarding the billboard being between the street right of way and the setback is just 25 feet and the distance of 1,000 feet from an existing billboard sign. It's pretty clear that some 36 feet in the air is not going to be pretty much a site distance. We're primarily basing our denial on the lack of compliance with the code.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I got a question for, more so for staff. If, if the code wasn't compliant, or I guess, what is, what is the setback, 25 feet?
Yes, sir, 25 feet.
Yes, and C3 and C4 is 25-foot setback from, from the property line.
So if that was 25, exactly 25 feet back, so if it's not 22, if it was 25 feet, then staff would be in approval. Is that correct?
With the, with the setback, yes, but there's still a distance requirement of 1,000 feet from the existing billboard sign. So that would still be another issue with lack of complying with the code for billboard signs in this zone.
I, I see two separate distances, because the applicant said that he's like 1,300 feet, and then staff is saying that it's...
That is...
Mr. Chair?
Chair, that, that's from the, that's from the next sign.
Yeah, he, from...
Yes, exactly.
To the east, Mr. Chair, they, they do not meet that 1,000-foot limit or requirement, excuse me, and that is the billboard to the east.
I think that's the Colony West, is that the structure of the building?
Yeah, correct.
There, there's a billboard on the, on the east property line measuring the way it's supposed to be measured from the street, the nearest point to the billboard, which is to the nearest point of the street to the proposed sign.
Am I reading this wrong? Is this, is it 730 feet from the next sign?
Yes.
Is that correct, or am I reading this wrong?
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
So, so, you know, I don't know how they're measuring, but, but again, the way you measure this is, is from the point adjacent to the, to the billboard, the street, to the point nearest adjacent to the proposed billboard. Our measurements was 730 feet. That's still less than 1,000 feet. So even if it was set back 25 feet, there would still be a distance requirement or lack of complying with the distance requirement pointing to the existing billboard.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to...
Mr. Chair, can I ask a follow-up question on that? So, so which billboard is, I'm looking at Google Earth, is that the one at the...
It's, it's two signs there, and one is a tenant sign.
Yeah.
Okay?
The Regions.
If you, if you look at, if you look at, at the, and I forgot what the address was, but I believe it's Colony West, it's like 10, 6-something, I looked at it earlier, I just can't remember. But you got two signs there, pretty much on the same location. One's a tenant sign, that sign complies. On east property line there is a billboard sign. The distance measured from that billboard sign, the existing one, to the proposed is 730 feet approximately.
I don't understand which, I don't understand which signs you're referencing. Are we going off the property to, to, to get to the next billboard? Is, is that the way this is done? Because on this property, there's a Colony West ground-mounted sign, unless it was taken away by the tornado, and then there's a Regions Bank sign.
I looked at it, this, also, I mean, to my knowledge, that sign is still there. I'm talking about the billboard sign that's, that's just north of it, on the east property line, right before it starts to go down the hill to the property to the east.
Yeah, okay, so we're, we're going, we're going, we're going east on Rodney Param to the next true billboard. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Did I ask your question, Commissioner?
Yes, it did.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and I was, I'm actually looking at it also and just trying to make, because Cigar Republic does do good business, you know, they're, you know, just a very good business and just reviews, and I've been there and they do good quality business. I, I was just trying to make sure, how could they be in code to make sure that for, you know, just staff can have some appreciation of it, but also the commissioners can have some appreciation. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to get around, and I've, my first initial thought was, oh, it's not, it's not a big deal, but we also want to make sure, this is a serious moment, make sure they're in code, but I'm trying to see to make sure that as long as they can be within code, and hopefully this is not a, a big item that will be, I mean, harmful for any of the citizens or pedestrians or, you know.
Okay, I mean, common sense wise, I mean, I don't drive a 36-foot tall truck. I just don't. So I agree with the site distance issue. We're just trying to comply with the code. It's, it's up to this body to, to, to look at the code and, and the two items in the code that don't comply and to, to approve or deny the application. This is simply staff's recommendation of denial and why.
All right.
I might, I might simply argue that the, the issue of sight lines at the intersection is moot. It is a, it is a pile type or a pedestal sign that is far higher than, than any visual range would be obstructed by. The real issue is the variance request for the separation between one billboard and another. That's really it.
Yeah, Commissioner Russell, we, staff concedes your point about the sight, the sight line. The, the distance is, is the thing that this is hinging on.
Yeah. It's, it's roughly, it's roughly a 30% reduction, 30% reduction in the required 1,000-foot separation. That's what we're discussing.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown had a question or comment.
Yeah, so if I, if I'm hearing staff correctly, the primary reason for staff's denial is not an impact on health, safety, or welfare, but a concern about compliance with a technicality in the code. Am I hearing that correctly?
With the setback and the distance, yes.
Yes, okay.
So if the applicant will, will be code approval for, lack of better words, if they will be adhering this to the code back 25 feet from the line and the yardage, and could we move forward, well, not saying move forward, we're going to vote, but would the staff have a, a, you know, if they fall into code, obviously the staff would support that, is that correct?
I mean, you know, the setback can probably be compensated, but how you create another, another X amount of square feet to comply? I mean, from one, to this, from one sign to the proposed one is 730, so how do you compensate and make the time afford the lack of complying with the, with the distance from an existing billboard sign? I don't, I don't think that's possible.
That's, 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 then, that's why we're here. They're requesting a variance from the distance requirements.
Again, it's up to this body.
Is that not true?
Commissioner Russell, it's up to this body to vote. Again, staff made our recommendation of denial based on the code. It's up to this body to vote to approve or deny, or to go against staff's decisions of denial.
Thank you, staff. Commissioner Russell or any other commissioner, do y'all have any other questions or comments on this? Commissioner Hodges, I see your hand, the floor is yours. Go ahead, Commissioner Hodges.
Yes, I'd like to ask our attorney. I mean, clearly, we would, if this would be approved, the code is not being adhered to. I'm assuming we have the authority to grant it, the lesser yardage, but I would like some explanation of how we have the authority to go against the code. If this is just a variance, then that's one thing.
So as far as this issue is concerned, I would say it's a matter of policy for the commission, but I would advise the commissioners to take heart what the code says in, in their votes.
Thank you, city attorney. I'll, I'll make a statement, and Commissioner Hodges, that kind of give you some better appreciation. I would just say this, I mean, Commissioner Russell did make a statement and a point, that's why they come to us, there is a code, but, and they're making different variations, and so there is a judgment and decision based on this commission, so, for our vote. And so it's contingent on our vote, whether it's, you know, pass or fail. So if that's, kind of answers some questions.
May I, may I make a point, please? Is this appropriate? So...
Sorry, sir, go ahead.
Some more background. Our original application, and still application, is a variance request. We are all understanding that we're closer to the sign. We were told that we should go to the Board of Adjustments for the variance request. The Board of Adjustments requires a hardship, so we had to pull that application. We're not asking, we're not saying we have a hardship. We're just saying we have a variance that needs to be voted on and, and requested. We understand there's a distance, we understand why the city staff said no, because it's not within code. We're asking for a variance because of the situation, the location, uniqueness of the application. Also, if I may say, we first went to the Arkansas Traffic, or Arkansas Highway Department, and they measured out from pole to street, to street to pole at 970 feet, and as the crow flies, 770 feet. So I'm not sure where the 730 got in, but I guess there's different measurements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regarding the code, Commissioner Hodges, this is a plan development proposal. Plan developments are site-specific. So again, if y'all want to approve the sign not adhering to the setback and not adhering to the distance, that's, that's up to this body. Regarding the measuring of the distance between the signs, I'll read that section of the code again. "No billboard sign located shall be located less than 1,000 feet from another billboard site. The separation requirement shall be measured along the nearest edge of the pavement between points directly opposite the sign." That's on the street adjacent to the sign there on Rodney Param. And then you're going to take that, and the next measurement in the distance is the other, the proposed sign is there at the street. I, I don't know how the highway department measured it or how they looked at it. With the tool that we have, we measured approximately 730 feet as, as measured according to the code. So I mean, it can be some descriptive argument about how it's measured one way or another, but I'm comfortable that staff measured the distance between the proposed sign and the existing sign correctly.
Thank you, staff. Any other, any other particular questions or comments from any commissioner? All right. If nothing else, I would like to entertain a motion for this item.
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted, with the exception of staff's recommendation for denial.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. May I give a roll call, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Lundey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Samad?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you applicant for coming in today. What we're going to do is, we're going to do one more item, and then we're going to take a, a short break, okay? So the next item we have up is item number two. That's item number two that's coming up, and that is item Z-9972. If the applicant is present, please come up. Before we have the reading, I have the city attorney, we need to make a statement on this. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the commissioner will remember from our last meeting, we had to go over this before we start to discuss anything about group homes, and I've sort of streamlined this process a little bit, hopefully, to make this statement a little bit more uniform. So I'll, I'll go ahead and read that. "As this body will begin to consider this item concerning a group home, it is important to address the commission and the members of the public in attendance in order to ensure that any discussion or comments remain productive. Any discussion or comments which concern disability status or a particular disability, whether that may be a physical disability, mental disability, or substance use disorder will not be relevant to our discussion on these items. The commissioners should note that no decision on these items should be made based on a disability status or a particular disability, and to do so would violate the United States Fair Housing Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the Arkansas Fair Housing Act. The Little Rock City Code provides that consideration, discussion, and comment on these items can address spacing of existing similar facilities, existing zoning and land use patterns, the maximum number of individuals on the application, the need and provision for readily available public or quasi-public transit accessed by residents to support services and availability of adequate parking. Individual tenants who pose a direct threat to the health and safety of other individuals or pose a direct threat of substantial damage to the property of others are not allowed in such a home. It should be noted that these direct threats must not be merely perceived or theoretical. This must be an individualized determination based on reliable and objective evidence. The Little Rock City Code also provides for an assumption of, a presumption of approval for any applicant which meets the other requirements of the special use permit ordinance and is housing eight or fewer disabled persons. If it is the advice of the Little Rock City Attorney's Office that this commission does not have the discretion to deny any application that meets the ordinance requirements with fewer than eight residents."
Thank you. All right, may we have the reading for the item, item number two?
Excuse me, lost my place.
That was item number, item number two.
I'm sorry, I got it. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for a group home facility to be operated in the existing single-family residence zoned R2. The proposed group home will have a maximum of three disabled residents at any given The site is located in the Twin Lakes subdivision, contains a, a resident, existing residence about 2,110 square feet, two-story, four-bedroom, three bath, three bathrooms. The request, I need to read that part. The total square footage for each bedroom is approximately 150 feet with one residence per room. There are three staff members at this location, one lives at the location, and the other two do shift work. Transportation is provided to the residents by the living caregiver. There are two parking spaces on this property. Staff supports approval of the special use permit as requested. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Adrian Walker.
All right, Ms. Walker, you do have several cards in opposition. If you like, you can defer your time until afterwards, or you can speak now, your choice.
I defer my time to afterwards.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have several cards here. The first card we have is Fred McRae. If you're available, please approach the podium, please. The next card is Shirley Thomas. Shirley Thomas.
I'm Shirley Thomas, as was stated to the commissioners. I'm a resident and have been...
I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas, you can move the, the microphone down, so you can be...
I thought I had.
Okay, there you go. Okay, I think we can hear you now.
Yes. I'm Shirley Thomas, presently a resident of Twin Lakes B, and I came on behalf of some of the residents of Twin Lakes B in opposition. We consider this a residential area, and that's the way we want to keep it. We do not want any group homes in the neighborhood.
Thank you. The next one is Donna J. Polis. I'm saying that correctly? Good afternoon.
We recently purchased a home on Tanya Drive and got the notice that they're going to put a group home over there, but that's all that we were informed about, that there's going to be a group home with disabilities, and it's not clear enough of what the group home is for. We are not certain of what type of people will be moving in as our neighbors.
Ma'am, that's, that's not going to be relevant to this discussion.
I understand. I meant criminal backgrounds is what I... The street is already congested with traffic, parked, people parked up and down the streets. It's difficult to get in and out. And with a group home, we feel like there will be additional safety issues with traffic. There'll be an increase in noise, and it will lower the property values for the homeowners on Tanya Drive and in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card is Ida Turner. If you're available, you can approach the podium.
Yes, my name is Ida Turner. I reside at 2300 Romine Road. I am in opposition of the group home because of the activities that I look out seeing when I look out my window of substance sales and other criminal activity. So that's why I'm in opposition of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Brenda Turner.
I'm in opposition of the group home because we do not want any type of public business in the area. When we bought the area, it's residential, and we do not, as previously stated, do not want to change that permit to allow that business or any other business in the area because, like you say, it is not designed for a business. It's the population, it's 300-plus homes, and that population with visitors and all is enough to allow for the street value, which we have use of now. So we asked if they moved, since they moved in, they did not ask our permission to come in. And so we are letting you know and the group home know that we have no problems with group homes. I think there are need for it. But at this location, since you are asking us for our permission, we asking you, please do not allow this business or any business in this area because it is not equipped to have a business at this time. So with your permission, we plead you to ask them to please relocate because, like was stated earlier, they are not the owners. It's someone, it's the owner, it's someone else that's allowing a business to operate at their facility with residential privileges. So we just ask you to do not approve this special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last card is DeArthur Gerald, or is it Jordan?
All right, a little bit, my name is DeArthur Jordan. I am a 32-year retired captain for the Little Rock Fire Department. I'm also past commissioner of Twin Lakes B subdivision. I've worked with the Northwest Precinct of trying to keep our community safe. And we have two parks there. We have Twin Lakes B Park. We have Kensington, that has a park. And I noticed that there's teenagers in this intersection of Tanya and Romine. On Romine, it's a hill, it's real congested, that's a main artery that comes into our community. There's a lot of traffic. You have these teenage kids coming in there now from that resident, skateboarding down in there, cars dodging through there. I've witnessed this. This is just not a good location for a group home, and this, what I've seen was teenagers. I didn't see any staff. So I don't know what you guys have or what was told to you. And I'll use my background as Forest Fire Department, because I've had some issue or dealing with, they had a group home on University, like north of Evergreen, that I've had, we had to go in, and we had problems with teenagers there because that was a teenage group home as well. I just don't think a group home that bordered by several single-family homes is a good location for this particular type of business, as they say. That's what it is, it's a business. And everything else that's in this area is all residential. And as I said, I've worked diligently with the Northwest Precinct, us trying to keep our park clean because that's a good hangout for teenagers who got into a lot of things. I'm not saying, I don't know what's going to be in that group home. This is the first time I heard something about disabilities, and I don't get into that because I understand the position of that. But I just know that this is not a great location for this particular type of business to be placed. And the safety is a safety issue for our families and for them as well. Because like I said, they own the skateboards, they'd be out, I'm sure a lot of people in that area seen them out there, and we had to dodge, I've had to dodge them. So with that, I'm against that. I hope that you guys look at this in, I don't know, I won't say the wrong words, but in a safety thing, a residential type deal. And I feel that, and that's just my opinion, that I'm not against group homes. I think that's a need. In my service, I help people, and I still try to help people. I just think this would be outside of residential location. So with that, I hope that you guys see our point and vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. With the applicant, please come back to the podium, please. All right, after hearing the oppositions, if you care to ask any of those particular questions and to make any other statements for your item, the floor is yours.
Yes, so I don't want to kind of blur the lines about kind of what we do, but particularly this quote-unquote group home, which the city deems it a group home, but by CEA standards, when they just updated the policies, it was, it's now deemed a controlled setting for us. So we do not own the property. There is somebody that owns the property, and these people rent the rooms there for their own private personal use. They are residents in this home. So this, it's not like, you know, they are outside in the street and unsupervised. These people have staff, and they do have some type of disability, and they are not outside at all times of the day or anything like that. They receive 24-hour care. According to what I read, as far as this code goes, it's been in effect since the 1950s. So that means if these people become disabled, or if their family members become disabled and have to have services brought into their house, then they too will have to have the same thing done, and somebody opposing them to be treated in their own home. These people live here. I mean, they're a part of the public. They just want a fair chance at life, and they just want to be treated normal. So that's it.
Thank you. I want to open the floor up now to any of the commissioners for any questions for the applicant or opposition, or any comments at this time.
I have a question.
Samad, the floor is yours.
How many occupants are you proposing or do you have in the group home?
There are three people. It's four people total that live here. Three that receive services from us, but they do have a staff that's there all the time.
So how many people, like, I guess, live there?
It's a four-bedroom home. It's only four people that live there right now. No other additional people would be there. Everybody has their own individual room.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question here. As far as you said 24-hour service staff to those four individuals, how many staff personnel are on staff?
It's only three, three members that receive services at this home. One person that lives in their home is a staff, that's what makes it four. We do have additional staff that come in at night, but that's during the 11 to 7 shift, and that's when mostly the entire neighborhood is sleeping, no movement at that particular time. And then there is a, there is, the driveway is big enough for them to park inside, I mean, you know, in a parking space in the driveway. So it's not, they're not parking on the street, nobody's hanging out, they're not walking around. Most of the time, when they're out, they're going out into the community, and their staff is with them, learning different things like money management, doing, giving them their medication, just introducing them back into society to be regular, normal people without people judging them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from any commissioners? If not, I would love to entertain a motion for this item.
Motion to approve the application with all staff's recommendations.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I get a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Lundey?
Oh, Commissioner Lundey, she had to take an immediate departure, so she did email in.
Thank you. McDonald? Commissioner McDonald? Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Bickers?
Yes.
Six, yes.
Applicant, your item is approved. Thank you very much. All right, so what we're going to do here, and we really appreciate your time, and we want to be, you know, very cognizant of your time here, we're going to take a brief break here, and we're going to reconvene here in six minutes. So take six, and we're going to reconvene then. Thank you.[1364.11]
Thank you. Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Bickers? Six, yes.
All right, applicant, your item is approved. Thank you very much. All right, so what we're going to do here, and we really appreciate your time, and we want to be, you know, very cognizant of your time here, we're going to take a brief break here and we're going to reconvene here in six minutes. So take six and we're going to reconvene then. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started here in just about 30 seconds. All right, we got the next reading is going to be item number six. And is the applicant here present for item number six? That is Z dash nine, 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 nine. Why the applicant is, is making his way up, can we please have the reading?
Sir, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of two duplex structures on two replatted lots. This is one per lot, it's going to be one duplex on the lot, each lot, at 206 and 212 South Park Street. The property is currently undeveloped and mostly grass covered. The property is comprised of two platted lots, lots three and four, block eight, Capital View Edition, and pieces of two other platted lots, the south one half of lot two and north 10 feet of lot five, block eight, Capital View Edition. The applicant proposes to replat the overall property into two equally sized lots of approximately 67 feet by 140 feet. This right at about two tenths, just over two tenths of an acre each. The applicant proposes to construct one duplex structure on each of the replatted lots. Each duplex structure will be 2,080 square feet in area. This is 1,040 square feet per unit and it's going to be two stories in height. The exterior of the structures will include horizontal siding with rip, with hip roof construction. A small covered porch will be located over the front entry doors. The duplex structures will be located between 29 and 35 feet back from the front, which is the south property line. All proposed setbacks will conform with section 36, 255, and this is the setback in the R3 zoning part of the code. The building heights are not to exceed 35 feet. The applicant is proposing eight paved parking spaces for per duplex to be located within the front yard area between the duplex structures and South Park Street property line. Section 36 dash 502 requires a minimum of six parking spaces for the two duplexes. The parking as proposed will be sufficient to serve the development. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this application. Staff believes proposed duplex structures located at 206 and 212 South Park are appropriate uses for this property. The duplex structures will only be a minor increase in the original platted density for this property. The proposed duplex structures will not be out of character with the general area. Staff believes the proposed duplexes will have no adverse impact on the subdivision or surrounding uses. The applicant is requesting no variances with the proposed development. Staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit, subject to compliance and comments and conditions with the, with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you for the reading. Before we move forward with the applicant, I just want to let this applicant and every other applicant here that we have left for this meeting, we actually are down to seven commissioners here totaling six here present and Vice Chair, Commissioner Russell via Webex. So at this particular time, once you come up or applicant that you have now, if you would like to defer, you can, since we're down to a limited number and you need at very minimum six votes of yes to, for approval. So I just wanted to make that just for the record. If you want to defer, you can, you don't have to, but it's an option for you. Okay, so I just want to let that know for the record that you have it. So at this particular time, applicant, please state your name.
Nick Tucker with Tucker Land Surveying here as advocate for the client.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tucker. It seems like you only have one card in opposition. If you'd like to defer your time now and come back afterwards, you may, or you can speak now, your choice.
Defer time until the end.
All right. So we have one card here, it is Mason Ellis. If you're present, please approach the stadium, the podium, excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Mason Ellis. I live in the Capital View Station neighborhood where this project is being proposed. Actually just spoke with Nick out in the hallway. I'm actually not opposed to the duplex at this. I think this is a good spot for it. There's other similar uses for property in this area. What I am worried about is the proposed parking layout. I've had sent some, a little bit of explanation diagram earlier, just kind of showing, but the way this is currently proposed with four parking spots for each structure in the front yard basically means the front yard will be paved concrete. And it's just, this, there's some examples in the neighborhood from previous years that are, have a similar layout. The duplexes, they fit great in the neighborhood, they're fine, but when we have the whole front yard as a paved parking lot, it just really detracts from the street and the neighborhood. This also needs, requires the buildings to be pushed further back, which kind of sets it back, or I guess sets it apart from the rest of the houses in the area. I think there's a way that these duplexes can be developed and built here to benefit the neighborhood, but having just the whole front yard in concrete or asphalt parking lot is not that solution. I'd like to see if there's other options to move the parking to the back. There is an alleyway behind Park Street, but it is undeveloped and overgrown, and I don't think there's a way to get access to that for parking in the back. But a lot of the houses in the neighborhood have parking that are accessed from the street where you drive by the house, by the structure, and the parking's in the rear. Actually think this would be a really good use for that because the way the sewer easement somehow on this layout cuts through the middle of the property, it really restricts the building footprint. Moving the parking in the back could allow for a bigger footprint for this by allowing the building to be pulled forward and the parking be put in the back over on top of that. I'd love to see if the requirements for three parking spots per, per unit that's required by the city could be just two. Sorry, that's three parking lots per structure, so could it be just two, one parking spot for each unit and parking on the street if there needs to be another one. That's really common in the neighborhood as well. So those are my just concerns about the project. But again, I'm not opposed to the duplex, but think this could be done in a way, hopefully to allow more square footage for the duplex, but also benefit the neighborhood and the street as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, if you will, come back to the podium here. You heard opposition. If you would like to rebuttal or reply to any of the questions and make any other statements for your project, the floor is yours.
All right, just, just real quick and to address Mr. Ellis's comments and concerns, even though he's not opposed, the parking lot has to be situated such that it is displayed now due to the fact that during the course of the survey for these two vacant lots, we discovered the city had installed a sewer line across the middle of the lot. We actually tried to go through reclamation for that to have the sewer line moved and get support, but we were denied for that, so we were unable to move the sewer line without having to relocate several hundred feet of, of six inch, you know, main line. That was just going to be too expensive. Also, the added expense of moving the concrete pads to the back and increasing the driveway lengths makes the margin for return on investment for these properties not feasible for the client. We would scoot these duplexes back and probably build a larger footprint have, had we not had the sewer easement, but given the fact that these two lots are what they are, this is the best, the best fit that we can design for them.
All right, I'm going to open the floor up for any of the commissioners to ask any questions or make any comments. The floor is open, commissioners.
I have, I have a question for the applicant. Why, why can't you park in the rear?
Not saying we cannot park in the rear, it's just the expense of pouring an additional 75 foot of concrete drive to get back to each lot makes the margin for return on investment unfeasible to build duplexes or even a single family residential structure on these lots.
But there's alley access. You don't have to pave in it, in additional 75 feet, you access the rear parking via the alley.
The alleyway is platted but undeveloped. There is also a sewer line running down the middle of the alley, which would have to be contested with if you chose to develop the entire alleyway. So again, you would be asking the client to develop four city lots worth of alleyway plus the additional cost of parking in the back just to not access from South Park Street, which is where all of the other houses and duplexes are accessed from currently.
The alley is already legally platted. Why would the property owner need to develop the entire alley?
City code states that if you want to use alleyway for primary access, it must be developed to city standards.
Okay, there's lots of alleys in the city that are not developed to city standards. I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not following your logic. I, I do want to say that I agree with Mr., with Mason's statement that the parking in the front yard is not a good development option for a residential neighborhood like this. You do have alley access. I for one would prefer to see the parking in the rear to take advantage of that. Yeah, that's about all I can say.
Again, there is a platted alley, but there, it is undeveloped altogether, non-passable. No one is using the alley for access.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Was staff trying to say something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Chair, staff would require them to improve the alley if it's undeveloped. If they were to use it for access to these properties, we would require them to improve it.
Mr. Tucker, and you said it would be a substantial cost. Have you had just a ballpark figure or some type of estimate that it would cost to, or that would add on cost to your project?
No, sir, I'm not a general contractor nor going to speculate on the cost to pour concrete and asphalt, but I will say coming from the north downhill south to the lots, it would have to be developed all the way to the southern lot, which is in the neighborhood of, of 300 foot of additional roadway expense to city improvement standards.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from any other commissioners? If not, I would like, love and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted with all staff's recommendations. This one was recommended for approval, right?
Yes.
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, yep, all right, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Lundey?
It's gone.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Bickers?
Yes.
We have six. Motion passed.
All right, motion passed. For the applicant here, thank you for coming out. We're going to move right along with our next item on the agenda is item number seven. If the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium and while you're doing that, we will provide the reading. That's item number seven, Z dash nine, nine, eight, seven.
The property owner requests to rezone 0.5756 acre site from R2 to C4. The rezoning is requested to allow future commercial development. The property is located on the south side of I-30, approximately 300 feet west of Distribution Drive. There are mixed commercial and industrial uses surrounding the property along I-30 and Distribution Drive. The city's future land use plan designates this property as C commercial. The proposed C4 zoning does not require amendment to the future plan. Staff is supportive of the requested C4 rezoning. Staff views the request as reasonable. The requested C4 zoning will represent a continuation of the existing commercial light industrial zoning pattern in this area along Interstate 30. Staff recommends approval of the requested C4 zoning.
Thank you. I will make a, just repeat this, just in case if someone has stepped out during the time I stated it previously. We're down to seven commissioners here as of, as of now, and that's including the six year present and Vice Chair, Commissioner Russell via Webex. If you do not have the passing votes, obviously because we're down the number, you know, that could be some type of implications. So what we are saying is, is totally your choice, you don't have to. You can defer your, your time and defer to the next meeting, which will be next month. Again, you don't have to, we just wanted to extend that option to you based upon the current state of the board. Okay? So at this particular time, applicant, you do have a choice. If you want to move forward, please state your name and let's move from there.
Thank you. Russ Fletcher with STT Incorporated, and yes, we will move forward, please.
All right, Mr. Fletcher, if you'd like to go ahead with your statement, you do have one card in opposition. You can defer your time and then come back right afterwards, or you can speak now, your choice.
Would defer, please.
All right, thank you. It's just one call, card unfilled here and we have Troy Lahey, if you'd like to come Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Little Rock Planning Commission and planning staff, my name is Troy Lahey, and I am Vice President of Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. Main reason we're opposed to this item, we don't know what they're going to do. Nobody's come to our meeting. We invited them. We have no idea of what they're planning on doing. And I've been thinking about making a study on all the people, all the places that have been through this planning commission that's got approval, that's never been in operation. I drive past three of them every day and I only drive five blocks from my hometown It may be different if he'd have come and told us what he was planning on doing, but he did not, and that's the reason we're opposed to him. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can have the applicant to come back up to the podium, please. And feel free to address any of the opposition concerns and if you also have any other statements for your project, the floor is yours.
So basically what we're doing, we currently own the Sunbelt property next to this lot. So basically what we're doing, we currently own the Sunbelt property next to this lot, 9501 and 9511 Interstate 30. And basically what we're trying to do is just combine these properties to give potential growth for the current tenant, which is Sunbelt Rentals. As far as just, I'm not sure how you quite termed it, but we currently in the city of Little Rock own, I would say, close to 200, 150 to 200 acres. In Little Rock, we have a big footprint out at the port. We have 6,600 I-30 is one of our businesses. All of our properties, just like Sunbelt Rentals is, well-kept. We do try to keep everything, you know, too cold, keep everything nice, neat, adhere, see that our tenants adhere to this. But yes, we do have a big footprint. We've been in business in Little Rock since 1995 and been in business in Arkansas in different cities since 1974. So basically, we're just trying to give the current tenant the room to expand as needed.
All right. Well, at this particular time, I want to open the floor up. Commissioner, do you have a question?
I do not have a question for the applicant. We appreciate you guys expanding your business and appreciate what you're doing in that part of Little Rock. I just have a comment, and this has been occurring with Southwest Little Rock United for Progress since I've been on the commission. And basically, they send a representative here to oppose everything that happens in their neighborhood. I'm looking at this 9425 I-30 is a skinny little lot located between two industrial parcels, Sunbelt Rentals, which is your business, and United Engines. It has frontage on I-30, and it was, I think this was on the consent agenda, and it's been pulled off. And so this gentleman has now waited three hours when there's just, I do not understand Southwest United, Southwest Little Rock United for Progress, I do not understand their motivation in coming and opposing things like this. They do it all the time. And frankly, it's just, this organization has just lost credibility with me personally. I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but this has kind of just been festering for several meetings, and I just thought I would say to the applicant, hey, thanks for expanding your business in this part of Little Rock. We need more people who will do that. And again, I do not understand the motivation of Southwest Little Rock United for Progress on something like this. It's just really perplexing. So that's just a comment, Mr. Chairman, but anyway.
I understand, Mr. Chairman, thank you, I mean, thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? And if not, I have had the privilege to see, I think, one of your properties is well-kept and, you know, very business and very tidy. So, you know, been one of the businesses, been around for a long time. I don't have any other particular questions. Commissioner Russell, did you have any? Comments or questions? If not, I would love to entertain a motion.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve the application as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. May I get a roll call, please?
Brown.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Samad.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Russell.
Aye.
Vickers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, motion passes. Applicant is approved. Thank you very much, sir, for coming out. And we can move right along here to item number 13. That's item number 13. If the applicant is present, that's S-1953-A. And while the applicant is coming to the podium, may I please get the reading?
The applicant is requesting preliminary plat approval to allow 1.12 acres of property located on the northwest, located at the northwest corner of Chico Road and Bunche Road to be subdivided into seven lots for single-family residential development. All of the proposed lots conform with minimum standards, which includes width, depth, area, et cetera, of city code. A 25-foot front-plated building line is shown for all lots. Utility easements are also shown for all lots. With the proposed plat, additional right-of-way will be dedicated for Bunche Road. Staff is supportive of the proposed preliminary plat. Staff views the request as reasonable. The applicant is requesting no variances with this proposal. Staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary plat, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. Applicant, please state your name.
Yes, Philip Lewis, Philip Lewis Engineering, on behalf of the owner.
Well, Mr. Lewis, we have one card in opposition. You can defer your time now, or you're more than welcome to speak first. It's your choice.
I'll go ahead and defer.
All right, thank you. We have one card in opposition here, and Mr. Troy Lahey. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, Little Rock Planning Commission, planning staff, my name is Troy Lahey. Thank you for the exercise in getting them coming up here. And likewise, this party, this developer never showed up. We invited them to our meeting, and we kind of like to know what they're going to do out there. How many square feet house is it? How large have they got enough drainage in it? And I've been by that property several times since this came out, and there's no sign-up. How's its neighbors going to know if he's, what his development is? If he doesn't have a sign-up where they can call in? That's the only reason that we're opposed to it. And I'm trying my best to stay off of commissioners, but talking about us, but we'll work that out. I think that's all we had, we discussed with it.
Thank you very much. All right, applicant, if you can please come back up to the podium. You can feel free to address any of the opposition concerns and any other statements for your project. The floor is yours.
Sure, I cannot speak to the size of homes they're planning on being. I know the developer-owner is a reputable commercial subcontractor, and we did do a drain, we were required to do a drainage study and analysis and provide a drainage report that was reviewed and commented on and approved by the city engineering staff and the layout and the plating was done in accordance and reviewed. And so I think we've met all the requirements. I don't think it was, I did speak to Mr. Lahey before we started. I apologize, he had reached out that I've been out of state and projects all over the state regionally, I didn't have time to get there. I don't know that the developer was aware. They may have reached out to him to come, but I don't think it was anything intentional on their part, certainly one on my part. So anyway, I did extend that apology before we started. But I think it's pretty straightforward. They're just trying to do some nice homes out, smaller homes in that area that are affordable for folks, and I think that's the extent of it. But if you all have any questions, I'll answer what I can, so.
Yeah, no, everything looks coded, went to code. I don't particularly have any particular ones, but I do want to open the floor up to our commissioners for any questions or comments. If there are not any questions or comments, I would entertain a motion for this item.
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted with all staff's recommendations.
We have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second here. May I please get a roll call vote, please?
Brown.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Samad.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Russell.
Aye.
Vickers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Applicant, thank you very much for coming out. Sorry about the wait. I know it's been a long afternoon.
That's okay, it was interesting. So y'all carry on.
All right, moving right along, we have item number 16. That's item number 16, S-1976. Is the applicant present? If so, please make your way to the podium. And while you're doing that, we will have the reading. Reading, please.
The applicant proposes to replat the north half of Lot 8 and all the Lot 9, Block 281, original city of Little Rock, into three lots for the construction of three single-family residences. The property is currently occupied by a single-family residence, which will be removed from the site. An alley, a right-of-way, is located along the rear where it's property line. The proposed lot sizes are as follows. Lot 8A is about 0.86 acres, 3,743 square feet. Lot 8B and Lot 8C are about the same area, 3,743 square feet. Section 36-256, subsection D and 4 of the city zoning ordinance requires a minimum lot width of 70 feet and a minimum lot area of 7,000 square feet for lots in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting variances from this ordinance requirement to allow reduced lot width and area. Section 31-232B of the subdivision ordinance allows a residential lot to be no more than three times as deep as it is wide. The applicant is requesting a variance from this requirement to allow increased lot width to dereliction for each lot. Staff is supportive of the request to replat to allow for the construction of three single-family homes. There are examples of other small lots, lot splits, and lot recombinations within this general area. Staff believes that the replat request is reasonable. Staff recommends approval of the proposed replat, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. Applicant, can you please step to the podium and state your name for the record?
Roy Andrews with Holloway Engineering, representing the owner.
All right. There are several cards in opposition of this. You can defer your time and come back afterwards, or you can speak now. It's your choice.
I will defer my time until after.
Okay, thank you. We have a few cards here, four cards. The first one is Lowell Dillard Jr.
Hi, my name is Lowell Dillard Jr., and I am the direct neighbor on the right side of this lot. Just a little background, this was a historic home that was torn down, you know. There were many opportunities that were missed to rehab this property and make something good happen for it, you know. So of course, we're a little upset that, you know, not necessarily upset because I didn't really see any options for that home. It had gone way past the point of no return, so you really couldn't do much with it. So I'm very excited about the development. This developer has done other things in the blocks around us, and I, you know, I actually like it. It's a really nice mix of modern, and, you know, she's bringing modern in to, you know, in a historic area. So I'm excited about the development. My only concern was the fact of having three homes on this lot. I mean, I was excited to have maybe one, you know, thinking maybe one, and then I found out, yeah, they're probably going to try to do two. But then three homes on such a small lot, I think it's just, it sounds just a little, I don't know. Yeah. And I feel like, I almost feel like I'm going to be living next to an apartment complex, you know. And so, once again, excited about the development, just not super excited about three lots. That's it. Thank you.
The next one is Anthony Semino. Am I saying that correctly?
Good evening, I'm Maya Foreman. Anthony owns the lot that's to the rear and to the left. His lot is behind mine. He had to leave, but he left notes and signed and dated it. He didn't know if they could be read or submitted. If not, then he could send them in an email, but he was in opposition for, you know, quite a few reasonable reasons.
Okay, if you like, staff, can we take the note for foul for that?
Okay.
We can take a note, but Ms. Foreman, yes, but Ms. Foreman, you have a card filled out yourself. So since you're here, would you like to go ahead and speak?
I will. So I am Maya Foreman. I own 1524 South Ringo, which was the Bush home. It's on the Historic Registry. It, Mr. Bush was one of the founders of Mosaic Templars, amongst the other, a number of amazing things, which Angela, who also, Angel, who also has a card, who will elaborate on that. The opposition is to the number, for a couple of things, is to the number of plots that has been divided into. Three is too many. I'm a real estate broker, and that's too many for that lot. The school across the street is Gibbs Magnet, also historically based, and Dunbar. There's an elementary school. There's a community center right across the street. The overflow comes on that street when they park because Dunbar and Gibbs share parking. So one of my primary concerns is parking. Like I said, I'm a real estate broker. You put a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home, you can get a family of five in each one of those homes. That's too many people. That's living next to an apartment complex. I don't care if it's single-family or not, that's what it is. So that's my first opposition, is parking. My second opposition is to the aesthetics of the buildings. These are historic homes on this entire little row. They're all historic. They can all, I'm currently in the process of renovating one, and I think just merely the putting a, I mean, to me, it's an equivalent of a trailer home next door to a historic home is going to devalue my property because all the other homes on that side, on both sides of the street, for this particular little narrow corridor, they're historic homes. So you wouldn't put that in Quapaw, you wouldn't put that in the governor's mansion, but because this neighborhood is maybe, I hate to say qualified or designated as a historic district, you do have developers that are coming in and just putting whatever's convenient and profitable there. And I do feel like this is going to devalue my property. And the parking, because I mean, five people in each one of those homes, it does not constitute for, if they're adult children that move back home, then every house has five cars or four cars. There's only so much parking you can have. In addition to that, the square footage of these homes on this, in this corridor, almost all of the homes in that corridor are at least 2,600 square foot homes. So this could very easily be a 2,600 square foot home or two 1,500 square foot homes. I also believe that it would be of benefit for these homes to resemble the homes that are currently there. I don't think that's stepping outside the margin to say, hey, build something that's similar. It may not be exact, but you can build something that is very similar. I noticed that we, I believe, were given option one of the possible homes that they were going to build. Where are options two and three? And that's just pretty much where I am. I'm not opposed to the development. Was I crushed that the historic home was torn down? Yeah, but three homes is too many. It doesn't fit the neighborhood aesthetic. It's going to devalue my property value, and I know that by putting three homes there that are, will likely be a lower-income home because not too many people want to live in a home that is 15 feet wide. That's like a trailer. And parking. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Our last card is Angel Burt. If you're present, please come to the podium.
All right, thank you. I'm Angel Burt. I am the executive director for the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood Association. Our mission is to preserve the cultural and historical integrity of the Dunbar Historic District and boundaries, ensuring that its rich legacy remains intact for future generations. And we are opposing the proposed development because it threatens to undermine the boundaries of the historic- the proposed development because it threatens, uh, to undermine the boundaries of the historical homes and cultural integrity of the Dunbar Historic District. Dunbar Historic District is actually the first African-American community here in Little Rock. And it holds, um, passionate historical history for the community. As Ms. Norman mentioned, um, John, John E. Bush, who's the founder of Mosaic Templars, uh, insurance agency, he started that insurance agency for African-Americans in eighteen eighty-four. Also, Dr. Thornton's home still resits in Dunbar community. He started the Arkansas Medical Dental and Pharmaceutical Association in eighteen ninety-four. Also, um, this particular block was known as Bush's Row. And his family members lived on this row on Ringo Street. Uh, and there are still several historical homes that are in the national registry on this same block. And as Mr. Tommy indicated, um, he said there was nothing done to prevent this, um, property at fifteen sixteen from being bulldozed over. And I, I beg to differ with that. Matter of fact, we had the support of the Little Rock, uh, Division of Housing and, um, stopped the, the, the demolition in October of last year. And, um, I guess the higher powers that be, um, made sure that it was bulldozed over. And the home again was on the national, um, registry. So we're talking about whether or not, what type of structures that are going to be going into this particular, land in, in this particular lot. So we're not opposed to modern structures, however, without historical context. It kind of undermines the area's rich history. So we want these, we want the historical context to be considered when talking about development. We are not against development, but it should reflect the architectural style and historical significance of the community. A matter of fact, we are in present talks with the Mosaic Templars Cultural Center now to start tours in this area of the community, historical tours, uh, in this community in the fall of twenty twenty-five. In conclusion, it is imperative that we honor and preserve the rich history of the Dunbar Historic District. The proposed development threatens to undermine the very essence of our community's identity and cultural heritage. By ensuring that any new construction is historically and culturally appropriate, we can protect the legacy of the pioneers like John Bush, Judge Milflin Winstar Gibbs. Let us work together to find a solution that respects our past while accommodating thoughtful and respectful growth. Our urge is commissioned to reject this proposal in its current form and encourage developers to work with us in creating a plan that honors our shared history. Thank you.
Thank you. With the applicant, please, uh, come back up to the podium here. And feel free to address any of the opposition concerns, uh, and make any statements. Uh, the floor is yours.
Appreciate your time tonight. Um, I know it's been a long night. Based on comments and, um, items moving forward, I would like to defer this until next month. And so we would have a time to address some of the comments.
All right. Okay. Um, well, uh, in that case, if you want to make a, you make a deferment, uh, definitely on your own behalf of the applicant, uh, yourself, I would entertain a motion for a deferment for the applicant on this item until next month's, uh, meeting.
Uh, motion to defer until next meeting for this item, this item?
All right. Yeah. So we have a, yeah, we have a motion to defer the action item. We have a motion and a second to defer action item sixteen S dash one nine seven six. Can I get a roll call for that, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion is deferred.
All right. Well, the motion is deferred until next month, and I definitely hope you and the community can work it out. I know is a very good developer and, and, uh, in a very good historical area, uh, and hopefully I think y'all great minds can come together and bring something beautiful to the community and to the city. Thank you. Moving forward to our next, uh, item here, item number nineteen. And before we get started on item number nineteen, that's nineteen Z dash one zero 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 eight. I'm going to have our city attorney make a statement. So the applicant can make way up to the stadium, uh, podium. And we're going to have a statement from the city attorney and then we're going to have the reading, uh, of the item.
All right. Um, as I stated important, uh, sorry, as I stated before, it is important to address the commission and members of public and attendance in order to ensure any discussion or comments remain productive. Any discussion or comments which concern disability status or a particular disability, whether that be a physical, mental, uh, disability or a substance use disorder will not be relevant to our discussion on these items. The commissioners should note that no decision on these items should be made based on, on disability status or a particular disability. And to do so would violate the United States Fair Housing Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Arkansas Fair Housing Act. The Little Rock City Code provides that consideration, discussion and comment on these items can address spacing of existing similar facilities, existing zoning and land use patterns, the maximum number of individuals on the application, the need and provision for readily available public or quasi-public transit, access by residents to support services and availability of adequate parking. Individual tenants who pose a direct threat to the health, uh, health and safety of other individuals or pose a direct threat of substantial damage to the property of others are not allowed in such a home. It should be noted that these direct threats must not be merely perceived or theoretical. These must be an individualized determination made on, uh, reliable and objective evidence. And this part is important, especially now because of, uh, the number of commissioners we have in attendance. The Little Rock City Code also provides for a presumption of approval for any applicant which meets the other requirements of the special use permit ordinance and is housing eight or fewer disabled persons, which this application meets. It is the advice of the city, uh, the city attorney's office. This commission does not have the discretion to deny an application that meets the ordinance requirement with four, uh, sorry, with eight or fewer residents, such as this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for the reading, please.
The applicant, excuse me. Been a long time starting to lose my voice a little bit. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for a group home facility to be operated in the existing single-family residence, zone R three. Proposed group home will have a maximum of two disabled residents at any given time. The site is located in the Otter Creek community and contains a two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square foot, two-story, four bedrooms with three baths. Surrounding the application area are developed single-family subdivisions. Clients do not have their own vehicles, but transportation is being provided for them. The total square footage of each bedroom is approximately one hundred and fifty feet with one resident per bedroom. There will be two staff members at this location. One lives at the location and the other will do shift work. Transportation is provided to the residents by the living and caregiver. There is a two-car garage that is used by staff and a large enough driveway to accommodate additional four vehicles. Staff supports approval of the special use permit as requested. Staff knows of no other similar facilities within fifteen hundred feet of this site. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit request, subject to compliance with comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Ms. Walker, uh, you do have a couple of cards in opposition. If you would like to defer your time.
I'd like to defer my time.
All right. All right. So we're going to bring up those, uh, ones in opposition here. The first one on the card is, is it Anthony Reed?
My name is Anthony Reed. I wasn't planning on speaking. This is my first time being in a meeting like this. And, uh, my wife was reading over the, um, we have an Otter Creek letter and it was saying that we have a group home coming into the neighborhood, especially on Lemon Crest. I stay on the bottom of Lemon Crest. Some of the meetings that I attend, you know, in the neighborhood, I have complaints about, uh, speeding down the, down that road. If you pull it up, we, I stay on the, I stay on the incline here and speeding and running the stop sign. I complained about kids, uh, uh, almost getting hit, a dust getting hit because they walking in the evening and walking at night. But one of the main reason that I wanted to talk, I didn't know too much about what was going on with this group home. I didn't know was it like you said, disability, uh, crime or what's going on. I just want to know, um, for the, uh, the, who owned the property, uh, why does Nap- why, uh, Otter Creek? And, uh, I wish, uh, I would have had everything prepared. I had a lot more to say, but, uh, this won't be my last meeting. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next card is Troy Leahy. And the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Troy Leahy, Vice President, Southwest Little Rock. United for Progress. My badge is about to run down over here. And we invited these people to come and explain what they're planning on doing, what they did not. And that's what we're, the reason we're objecting to it. We don't know what they're going to put in out there. And would you like to be living where you live? And somebody come put in something that you have no worth of idea what they're doing? I don't think you'd like it very much. And that's where we feel about it. And that's all I got to say. I'll talk to the lawyer later.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant, if you can come back up to the podium, please. Feel free to address any of the opposition concerns, uh, and make any statements, uh, for your project.
So I have been living in Otter Creek for well over seven years and I stay at the bottom of Lemon Crest, seven Lemon Crest, to be exact. And, um, the, my, my clients have lived in Otter Creek for well over three years. They have not had, it's only been one call where the ambulance was came, came out and one call for po- for the police department. There are several other C U S waiver providers that were, that operate in Otter Creek. And I don't think that it's fair for anybody to come in and pinpoint these people simply because they do not have a voice. These people that live in Otter Creek are all older in age. I get that. But in the same sense, in the same voice, they're getting older. And if they have to have services where people come out to their home, they're going to have to do the same thing. Irregardless of if they have, uh, any type of disability or they become dysphoric. These people just want to be normal. They don't come out into the neighborhood. They're actually petrified of the people around them. They, in this particular home, they don't even come outside. And we have to get them to come outside. There hasn't been any ruckus. They, they, no breaking and entering. They don't linger outside. These are all older people who are in their forties that stay in this home. And so, um, to Mr., him, I talked to him on the phone. I had a conversation with him. But unfortunately I had family circumstances that prevented me from being able to come to his meeting. And I don't deem that appropriate after I explained to him and he was in agreeance to what I said for him to come up and say something completely different. But I'm, I understand what they're saying and all of that, but at the same time, everybody should be afforded the right to live anywhere in the city of Little Rock that they, that they can afford. And just so happened, these people have to literally live together in order to live a good, safe, comfortable life with staff in twenty-four hours, seven days a week. They're never left alone. They're not causing any fires. They're not running up and down the street and nude. They're not a nuisance. And, and they've been here for so long and these people didn't even know that they live there. So why now? I don't understand. That's not fair. The only reason why they being pinpoint is because we were made by the city to put a special use permit in place. If they hadn't known about the special use permit, these people still could live there in peace. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Here, here.
At this time, I'm going to open the floor up to any of the commissioners at the time for any questions or comments. Uh, commissioners? And if we don't have any questions, I would love to entertain a motion.
Actually, I do have one. Um, the last one that, that I voted on was this, was that one similar? Had those folks been there for several years?
Yes.
As well?
Yes.
Should have asked that question.
Yes.
So what you're seeing in terms of these applications is, I mean, you know these a lot better than I do, right? I'm only seeing it from the outside.
Right.
But what I see as a commissioner is I see, um, residents, neighbors, especially on that last one, lots of folks saying, we're worried about this and we have concerns. At least with this specific property, as you said, you haven't had anyone approach you in the past three years.
No.
Got it.
Answer your question, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from any, any other commissioners? If not, I would love to entertain a, a motion, please.
Will gladly make a motion to approve as submitted with all staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second here. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Applicant passes. Thank you very much for coming out and I know it's been a long wait. Thank you for definitely your patience, your time. Uh, moving right along to item number five. Item number five here. If the applicant is present, you can make your way to the podium here. That's Z dash six two three seven. That's C. May I have the reading, please?
Mr. Chair, appoint information. So as mentioned in last month's meeting, Mr. Woodbank is a personal friend, so I, I don't feel comfortable voting on this. But on the flip side, in light of the fact that there are only seven commissioners present and it's going to require a vote of six, if I do abstain from the voting, will that be a tally against or can I just step back from the voting? Does that make sense?
No, I definitely understand. If, if you have no involvement with the project per se as an owner, et cetera, I don't deem an issue, but I'm going to revert that to our city attorney on this matter. Uh, to answer Commissioner Baxter's, uh, direct question.
Well, I, I, first of all, I would like to point out that if you did abstain, it would, basically the, the, the code requires.
Right. What I'm saying is not abstain. I'm saying step back from the voting entirely. So not even abstaining, just not taking part in the voting. Maybe that's.
He still needs, he still needs six.
You would, you would still need six, so.
Correct. Got it. Either way.
Hey, hey, Josh.
Second issue in terms of bias, yes.
I, I can only tell you what my experience has been on, on this commission. I've been doing business in this town for thirty years. That sounds strange to say, but so a lot of the people, I, I, and I think everyone else is in the same position. We all know people and have relationships with people who, who approach that podium. If, if I recused or abstained every single time I knew someone or went to church with someone or worked with someone or had a relationship with someone, that, that would be way too often and I would not be able to, to do this job. So I think we all have a lot of relationships. So I would, my, the way, so the way I approach it is if I don't have a financial interest in it and it's not my company that I work for at that podium, uh, I vote on it. And that's, that's just me. That's just, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but.
And I, I would just like to reiterate, uh, a bit of what Commissioner Hart said there. I mean, I, I, as attorneys, you know, we, we often try to avoid the mere appearance of impropriety, but, uh, you know, we, we are in the state of Arkansas, even though we're in the largest city in the state of Arkansas. It is, it's a small world. So, uh, yeah, the, the question is more, can you remain unbiased? Just because you happen to know someone doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have a bias. Um, you know, if, 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 uh, the applicant was the best man at your wedding or, or, you know, your child's godfather or something of that nature, then, you know, maybe that might be a different story, but if, if it's just that you simply know him, uh, that, that's going to be a determination. I'll, I'll leave up to you. But the, the question is, can you remain unbiased in your decision-making?
I feel in light of this consideration that I will not recuse myself and, uh, can vote fair and equitably.
Chairman Vickers? Chairman Vickers. Does the card say in opposition?
Uh, no, the card actually says in support.
Perfect. Can you step to the mic?
Mr. Tucker.
To the mic, please.
Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry, because we, we got to finish the reading, right? Mr. Tucker, let me do this. We're going to finish. We would love to hear what you have to say. And we want to, we respect you all's time. So we're trying to, we want to make sure we respect everyone's time. So we're going to get you up here just shortly. Okay? We're going to have the reading, bring the applicant up and you can definitely come up and we would love to hear what you have to say. Torrance, go ahead.
The applicant proposes to rezone the property from PDC to C2 to allow the barber beauty shop in addition to other expanded commercial uses to include a massage therapist, esthetician and other allowable businesses. The property contains an existing two-story, 1,032 square foot principal structure and a one-story, 402-foot square foot utility building. An existing driveway provides access from Taylor Loop Road. Majority of the property contains paving to accommodate client parking. The property surrounding the site containing a mixture of zoning and uses. The city's future land use plan designates this property as S O suburban office. The requested C2 zoning will not require a land use plan amendment at this time. The property immediately north and west of this site is designated as C commercial. Staff does not support the C2 zoning requests. Staff feels that this 0.46 acre property is not appropriate for C2 zoning. The C2 zoning district requires a minimum lot size of five acres. In addition, staff feels the planned development, zoning is most appropriate for this location, given the surrounding zoning. The applicant can seek approval for additional uses for the property, existing planned development by revising the existing PDC zoning. Staff recommends denial of the requested C2 zoning.
This, this one was on consent, wasn't it?
Something is off here.
I'm showing consent.
Yeah. And as I was reading, it's something like this.
That's the last, that's last month, I believe, when he came in for C2. Now he's going PDC.
That, uh, as I was reading it, I just, something didn't match. Uh, I apologize. I do have the staff update highlighted.
No problem. We, we understand, Mr. Tucker.
It's my fault. I'm tired. I, I almost can't talk. Um, I apologize. Excuse me, Mr. Woodbank. Staff update. Wow. Applicant submitted a letter to staff on June 19th, 2024, revising the application to be revised, a revised PDC zoning instead of rezoning to C2. The revised PDC zoning includes the following. Maintain the previously approved barber hair salon use. Add massage therapy as a permitted use. Add C1 neighborhood commercial permitted uses as permitted altered uses. Staff supports the revised PDC zoning request and feels that the, that the proposal is appropriate for the property. Sorry. Staff recommends approval of the revised PDC zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. My apologies, Mr. Mr. Woodbank.
Thank you. All right, applicant, could you please step forward and please state your name for the record?
Robie Woodbank.
All right. Okay. You do not have any cards in opposition. You do have one card in support. Uh, you can let Mr. Tucker speak now or you can come back up, make a statement. Uh, Mr.
I'll let him go.
Mr. Tucker, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, you nearly made me to get heart attack by calling C2. Uh, anyway, last month I was here to object to the proposal from, uh, because the resident or said address did not have the, uh, the, the capacity to have a C2 zoning. So, but because it's a young man and we know that we all want to make sure that people develop themselves to keep the, uh, the same status of that building. So the suggestion was that we change it to C1 because on the opposite side of the road of the said address is C1. So that alone, uh, make us to be comfortable to accept that, uh, proposal. Or anything else was C2, well, guess what? We're going to be really fighting. So, and I really encourage you guys, your hard work and suggestions to make sure that, uh, every young man to deserve to develop themselves and work with him. So I really applaud you guys for that. And I want every commissioners, whether you know him or not, to make sure that we approve this, uh, this zoning for C1, uh, approval for Mr. Ubanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Applicant, please come back up. Uh, feel free, uh, to address the board, uh, on your project. The floor is yours.
I think he summed it up and presented it probably better than I would. Um, if anybody has any questions for me, I think that would be a good place to start.
All right. Uh, at this particular time, I'll open the floor up to any of the commissioners if there are any questions or comments. If we do not have any particular, uh, questions or comments from the commissioners, I would love to entertain a, a motion, uh, for this item.
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted with all staff's recommendations.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. May I get a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Uh, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you all for definitely working it out. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you very much. See you guys next month.
All right. Our last, uh, item on the agenda for this evening is the storm water management and drainage manual revisions. And they're going to give a presentation. Yes, I'm sorry. The floor is yours.
Okay. Do you have our presentation that you can?
Uh, I think, I think they're pulling it up here.
Well, I will introduce myself while that is going on.
Yeah, sorry about that. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah.
Go ahead. If you need to, uh, you know, give us the modifications, summarize it, however you want to do it.
Yeah. Um, thank you very much for your time. My name is Natalie Rogers. I am with HAF. We've been contracted by the city planning and development to work with them to update the storm water and drainage design manual. And I'm here with my colleagues, Miles Simmons and Troy Jorman, who have also been working on this project. And so we are here to present to you with the updated manual and provide a summary to what some of those updates and what some of those changes are. So I'll try to breeze through, breeze through this pretty quickly, um, since it's been a long day, but thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. So let's get started. Real quickly, just kind of a agenda of what we have to talk about is why we are updating it, what is the need for it? What are the water quality regulations? What was the process to getting this manual updated? Go over the changes and then also talk about what these impacts will be to this revision. So the big question is why do we need to update it? This manual is part of the city's policies and programs to reduce pollutants and to be in compliance with their MS4 permit, which is issued by ADQ. And so that's really a big driver for this update. One of, some of the key things that we want to achieve with this is reducing flood risk, improving water quality and protecting streams. Next slide, please. So to get into the water quality regulations and what's really driving this, um, the Clean Water Act is, um, you requires the controls to reduce discharge of pollutants to the maximum extents, um, practable. And that leads down into the state, which has a goal of reducing 80% of total suspended solids from streams and from runoff. And so that is what goes into your MS4 permit. We've got some of those, um, points highlighted there, but the goal of that is to reduce the maximum extent practable. The discharge of pollutants from the areas of new development and significant redevelopment, um, after construction is completed. And so the goals is to ultimately reduce pollutants from runoff. So here's our update, our update process for how this has gone. We began this process in 2023. And we began doing a review of the manual and the city ordinances. And we benchmarked the current drainage manual against other cities, peer cities. And we looked for gaps of things that may need to be updated. As part of that process, we also gathered stakeholder input from members of the community, developers, community members, um, engineers. And we determined what some of the priorities were for the community members. The third step has been the draft updated manual, which is what we have submitted to you for your review. And we've also submitted recommendations for ordinance revisions. And right now we're in step four, which is presenting it to you for your review and approval with the goal of implementing in January of 25. So step one is our, was our review and benchmarking and we compared, um, the drainage manual, went through a series of items. You can go on the next slide, please. We looked at quite a few cities and also some state agencies. Some of the, the major cities that we looked at for comparison at their manuals was the city of Fayetteville, Memphis, Springfield, Missouri, city of Rogers and city of Tulsa. We wanted to get a wide spectrum of what different cities of sizes and different types of areas we're using and look at what's kind of the state of the art for storm water and drainage design. The Georgia Stormwater Manual is kind of the, the peak of what many people are using and what many municipalities are using. And so that played an important part in our benchmarking exercise. Next slide, please. So some of the key benchmarks that we looked at, some of the comparison points, um, most of the manuals reviewed used what's called Atlas 14, which is a rainfall data that NOAA develops and is public information. And so that was one of the updates of this manual. Um, some of the cities don't use it, but that is, TP40 is an older precipitation data set. So updating to Atlas 14 provides a newer data set. All of the drainage manuals that we reviewed required water quality treatment. Um, and with that water quality treatment, there was some variation across the different municipalities of what they would be requiring. You would have, um, anything to one inch of water quality volume to 1.2. Rogers uses what's considered the 85th percentile. And for the Little Rock update, we are proposing the 90th percentile precipitation for new development.
Did you say a rainfall manual that NOAA developed?
Yes, sir. It's a no rainfall data set. So that actually gives you, um, precipitation values.
Anyone see the humor in that at all? Got any people who can understand Old Testament?
I got it.
Okay, okay. All right. Anyway, go ahead.
Um, one of the manuals, um, that we reviewed, um, only one of them required less than a hundred year design storm. And so that is one of the updates is updating to a hundred year design storm for this manual. And then the storm system itself, so the, um, your culverts, your storm sewers, that design storm varied across the different municipalities, but they did all require an analysis and safe passage of a hundred year. And so for our updates, they're highlighted in red, the proposed design storm for Little Rock will be the 25 year for storm system. So. Thank you. So the next step was stakeholder input. Um, if you'll go to the next slide. So we've been working on this for about a year and a half now. And we began with starting a website to provide updates to the city and that website is still active. You can access it at that website. And we have uploaded the completed manual draft chapters. There have been surveys posted on this website. And we've been sending out notifications to a group of stakeholders to gather input from them. As part of this process, uh, beginning in May of last year, we have held 13 public meetings across the city to discuss the updates. We have received, um, 65 responses so far to our survey that we opened up last year. And we have been continuously sending updates to our group of stakeholders. It's over 250 engineers, architects, consultants, developers and construction companies, as well as HOAs and POAs across the city. All right. So this is where we'll start getting into actually what are some of the changes. So the draft chapters, um, next slide, please. So the plan was to review and revise the manual and to improve the resilience of infrastructure. So one of the biggest parts of this update was to modernize the current storm water drainage design manual. Not sure if any of you have actually seen the manual itself, but it's not very user friendly. So that was a big aspect of this update. We're also addressing water quality by including measures to remove pollutants and incentivize green infrastructure. And then updating the methodology. So updating the engineering analyses to use latest methods and expand, um, the analyses of different storm events. So here's a proposed outline. Um, there on the left is what the current, um, outline of the storm water drainage manual is. And there on the right, you can see the updated chapters for the manual. And I'd like to point out, um, we've got a lot of, a lot happening on this, um, but we are condensing several chapters into one chapter, just to condense and kind of streamline the process. You can see where those arrows are condensing some things down to the proposed chapter two, as well as the, um, proposed chapter four. We are adding a new chapter, which was chapter eight, and that is water quality. And we have made some revisions and updates and added some new sections to the appendices as well. So chapters one and two, um, these were mostly just streamlining the submittal procedures for actual drainage, drainage submittals to the city. So clarifying submittal requirements and providing a place for developers and engineers to have all of their main criteria in one location. And we've actually included an example submittal in appendix B. Chapter three is where we start to see some of our updates. And this is the determination, determination of storm runoff. So this is actually where you start to have your engineering analysis to determine how much runoff you get from a site depending on the rain event. So like I mentioned earlier, um, we are revising the precipitation. So this is the precipitation depth that they'll use to determine their runoff, um, up to Atlas 14, which is the latest standard for precipitation depths. There are some changes in the higher storm events, but it's pretty comparable. It's not a significant change. Some of the goals of this chapter were to utilize the best available data, modernize the hydrologic methods, revise the methodology based on the watershed size. And there were also several, um, unnecessary calculation aids that were in the original manual that we've removed and replace those with different, uh, calculations and equations to use. So. So chapters four, five and six are essentially looking at the storm system itself. So it is looking at your storm sewer, your open channel, your covert hydraulics. And the major changes here were, um, updating the design storms based on street classification for principal arterials. Um, cross drainage is a hundred year, no change there. Major and minor arterials, we are revising that from originally a 50-year storm event to a hundred-year storm event. And for all other streets, uh, it was previously a 10-year storm event and now we are revising that to a 25-year. And the biggest reasoning for this is to provide emergency access during a flooding event. So we don't want to have new developments come in. They only have one entrance and exit and it gets washed out or flooded, um, during a major event. So chapter seven covers storm water detention. Um, previously the manual required that detention be studied up to a 25-year storm event. And we are now requiring that analysis be run for a series of storm events from the smallest, which would be a two-year storm event up to a hundred year. And detention will be required to detain up to a hundred year. Slide, please. Um, as part of this analysis, we are requiring a new downstream analysis. And this is for only sites that are greater than 20 acres. So it may, um, this are going to be really large, um, developments. And what this will mean is that they will have to look at what is happening downstream to a point that is 10% or less of the total watershed area. to a point that is 10% or less of the total watershed area. So that means they just have to do some additional analyses, make sure they're not having any downstream impact from their development. So water quality is our new chapter. This is chapter eight, and it's providing criteria for water quality treatment and guidance on the use of low impact development and storm water best management practices. We developed a set of water quality criteria and BMP guidance. And the big item here is that we are establishing a water quality volume. And that's based on the 90th and 85th percentile of storm events. So looking at all of the rain events out at the Little Rock gauge, which is at the airport and what's the depth, what's the amount of precipitation for that 90th percentile of all storm events reported at that gauge. And so that ultimately is 1.5 inches. So with the water quality volume, the purpose of that is going to provide treatment from the site to reduce post development total suspended solids by 80%. And that is a performance goal based on ADQ's MS four permit. So to be in compliance with ADQ and EPA. Next slide, please. To kind of build on that, in appendix C as part of the update, we've provided a list of storm water control measures with estimated removal efficiencies. So trying to lay out here lots of different types of options depending on your type of development and the pollutant you are trying to remove or limit from your system in different ways that you can remove it from your system. Chapter nine is the construction site storm water management, and it is providing information on construction site storm water management practices to control erosion and sedimentation. So we didn't make a lot of significant changes to this chapter, but we did clarify some of the requirements and some of the accepted erosion control measures. Our appendices, we have five appendices. And one of the biggest pieces of this was to revise the guidance for more consistent submittals. So provide them with an example submittal, provide detailed information on the selection and design for water quality BMPs, so different ways to treat the pollutants and provide some updated erosion and sediment controls. Slide, please. Appendix A is a submittal checklist, and this is meant for developers and engineers to have a checklist of these are X, Y, Z things that you need to make sure you're including with your submittal. This will also aid with city reviews. Appendix B is an example report and example submittal. Appendix C is a document going over BMPs, so your best management practices for storm water. And appendix D is discussing the different types of erosion and sediment control measures. So the last part of our presentation is talking about what are some of the impacts to this. So we know that any change is going to cause some impacts with development. So we took a look at what are some of the anticipated cost assessments with this change? And, you know, it is very, it varies a lot depending on what type of development you are. You can't, we can't say for certain it's going to cost X amount of dollars for every type of development because every development is different. But what we did do is we tried to look at some of the major changes that are being made to this manual and look at if it was going to be a general cost increase or potentially cost neutral or even a cost decrease if possible. So some of the big items, the change in precipitation methodology, so the update to NOAA Atlas 14 is cost, ultimately cost neutral. There would be no increase to the engineering analysis or review. The look at requiring the detention for the two, five, 10, 25 and 100 year storm event will ultimately have a cost increase for engineering analysis and construction. We do anticipate they'll be needing additional engineering analysis for pond sizing and outlet design. And with the change in detention of a hundred year storm event, an approximately 25% increase in detention volume. So there would be increased excavation or additional underground detention there. With the water quality volume, whoops, sorry. With the water quality volume, there would be some additional cost increase for engineering analysis, city review and construction. There would be additional analysis with treating that extra, that 1.5 inches of runoff. The next one would be updated runway cross drainage design storm to be a minimum of a 25 year storm event. And this would be cost neutral and cost increase. It's, it's kind of on that line. There would be an increase to engineering analysis and there would be a cost increase to construction. But the engineering analysis aspect of it is potential to be minimal. And so that aspect of it is kind of cost neutral to a slight increase. The third one from the bottom there is updated acceptable runoff analysis methodology. We anticipate that to be cost neutral. Most of the time for these large developments, you're already having to hire an engineer anyway. And there's no additional, any of the software that we have suggested in the manual is free to use. The downstream impact analysis would be a cost increase for engineering analysis and city review because it would require additional capacity analysis downstream and would require additional city reviews to determine if there, excuse me, any impacts downstream. And then lastly, the addition of a stream buffer requirement would be cost neutral. But there is a potential for less developed areas with a different development. So the big, really important item that I do want to bring to your attention is what are the revision benefits? The detention and storm system requirements are ultimately going to lead to increased public safety and protection of property. There will be fewer nuisance flooding complaints, a prolonged life cycle of existing infrastructure. By upsizing and designing for these higher storm events, you're protecting these things for a longer life. So hopefully they're not getting washed out every storm event or they're overtopping every storm event. It's also going to result in reduced business interruption and economic impacts from flooding. And when, on the water quality side, with the implementation of low impact development and stream buffer requirements, the goals there, you know, these benefits are reduced degradation of water quality, reduce stream bank erosion. This reduces the burden of the city for having to continually do maintenance on projects and continue to do maintenance on stream banks. And it preserves natural features which can increase, increase the value and sale price of residential lots. So in summary, these are the, the biggest items and the major impacts or major changes to the manual. I've gone over them in several times here, but update to the rainfall, update to the detention measures, adding water quality. The old manual did not have any water quality requirements. And then lastly, updating the design storm for minimum design storm on roadways and drainage. That is my presentation and we will take any questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you, madam. At this time, we can open the floor up. Any of the commissioners for any questions? Commissioner, just go ahead.
Just to clarify, this applies to new construction, private or governmental?
Yes, new, new construction or redevelopment.
Or redevelopment and any new housing subdivisions or business operations like that?
Yes, sir.
Not to existing homes or existing streets absent their need to be replaced?
Correct. And they're, they're doing redevelopment to those, then they will be held to these standards.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Has anybody done an analysis on what the average increase in cost will be per project?
No, sir. That is a very hard item to calculate just based on these so many different types of projects. And there are a lot of variables with the way that a development might implement their BMPs. So it's, that one's tough to estimate. Do you have any additional?
Okay.
One, one thing I would, one thing I would point out, Brad, and this is not, this is not a knock on the work that HAF has done because I think they've done a great job. I do hate to see our city make our development regulations more stringent. And I hate to see the burden placed on developers increase, whether that be cost or time or effort. We are a city that is probably getting our butt kicked by our neighbors. Certainly we're getting our butt kicked by Northwest Arkansas when it comes to development and where retailers and large corporate users want to be. And one of the advantages I feel like we can have is to make this place an easy place for new development to occur. And when I see things like cost increasing and more stringent studies to do developments, it sort of, I sort of think, well, we're kind of going the wrong way. I understand things have to change and clean water is a bigger deal now than it was. But you do want to be one of those development communities where developers go, oh, Little Rock, man, it's really easy there. You won't have any problems there. You won't have to spend extra money or hire extra engineers. And this sort of seems to be going the, the other direction. But that's just, it's just a, an observation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back on that just a little bit real quick because I come from a state where all improvements are put on the developer. I moved here from a state where a development like the, the new residential neighborhood that we saw off of Valley Ranch Drive would cost that developer upwards of $100,000 or more in, in road improvements where we were only asking them to improve 600 feet of a road that accesses their site. Little Rock is incredibly developer friendly. If, if any of our commissioners have been to Bentonville recently, which, you know, does not charge developers anything to develop or to improve the storm water infrastructure there on a moderate rain day, I hope you bring rubber boots because the flooding is ridiculous. This, this is, based on this report, this is the minimum that we need to do as a city just to maintain our infrastructure and ensure that as we move forward, you know, we have things in place so that, you know, we're just, we're just maintaining systems. We're not, we're not going over and above and beyond to improve them.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, this is actually a follow up to both those questions because I, you know, grew up here. I'm not a developer, I'm not an architect, but I've lived places where it does cost a lot and there's still a whole lot of water and stuff and there's a lot of problems. You mentioned several cities, Rogers, Bentonville, Tulsa, those are Memphis, those are comparable cities in the nearby area that we do compete with. You said it's hard to figure out an impact of this. Where does this sit relative to those in terms of cost to developers? Or do we even know that yet?
Yeah, we, we didn't compare specific costs in cities from there.
Effort burden, if that's a better term for it.
I'll tell you Rogers is much more of a burden. They require and Fayetteville. We, HAF does this work, but we also do land development work. And I can tell you that Northwest Arkansas is still considered a tougher place to develop than Little Rock, even with these changes. The other point I wanted to add out is, or add to this is, one of the things we didn't do, because we try to be a little bit conservative on this, is to document these savings to taxpayers. What we do know is things like increasing the size of cross drainage structures ends up meaning that those structures last a lot longer. When we do have a flood event, we don't blow out the entire road and have the taxpayers have to come back and fix that. So long-term net benefit to the taxpayers, which keeps tax costs down. We have seen that. We know that that happens. But that, that safety aspect of it too is really huge. And, and I do want to point out, we didn't take credit for all the savings that developers are going to see. Providing that checklist, providing that example drainage report, providing some flexibility in one of the sections of code. We actually had a question about this. It was maybe not exactly clear. I think we've revised it just slightly. But one of the things we put in there is especially in redevelopment areas, if there is an existing problem downstream, allowing the city and the developer to work out that instead of doing detention on site, let's take that money and go fix an existing problem that's in the public infrastructure. That's a better benefit for everyone. I, I've worked with developers in the past. Developers can get things done usually quicker and cheaper than necessarily going through a public process. So let's use that to our advantage. Sorry, I'm gonna keep hitting your cap. So let's use that to our advantage. So we did, we do look at those things. We do try to make it more streamlined. And I think definitely a lot of the things that we put in here were to make sure that, like for those smaller developments, there's not near as much of a cost change. But the bigger developments, there'll be a little bit more. But, you know, we're also trying to protect the public. We're also trying to look at making sure that those new developments that are coming in are not going to flood in the next five years. And then we've got the city having to come back and spend a lot of money to try to fix those problems. What we do know, and it was on one of the, kind of one of those last slides, is that anytime you mitigate or prevent flood damage, there's about a seven to one dollar cost benefit to it. So from a community perspective, and it's much, much easier to try to prevent those problems when new development is coming in. So we're, we tried as much as possible to reach a balance. I can tell you this is definitely not the most strict set drainage manual within the state of Arkansas. Definitely not. There are some that, that want it to be even stricter. And I mean, there's some other communities that wanted to be even stricter than what they have now. And they're, they're already stricter than what this would be or stricter, but looking at it that way. The other thing I want to say is all of these things help for the city of Little Rock to lower their FEMA insurance rates. That's the other big benefit. So it lowers cost overall to just be a little bit more protective. We're not talking about designing everything to the 500 year, which in some places across the country, they're going to designing for the 500 year because they've had so much risk. We're not going that far here. We're just getting to kind of that FEMA standard so that we help those areas that do have flood risk already to have lower insurance rates. So those other benefits are a little harder to like put a tangible number on, but we do know nationally like that seven to one type of numbers, what you see out there.
All right. Any other particular questions? All right.
Well, just a comment. Close to where I live, there was an older drain pipe, storm water, rain pipe. Ultimately, the city had to buy property in a residential area that is very expensive to put in a much larger pipe. So this sort of thing I think is absolutely necessary if we want to stop increasing impacts on governmental expenditures.
And Mr. Chair, I'll add one last thing. I just want to thank HAF for all the hard work you guys have done. I know you guys have been down here and done community meetings. And sometimes those community meetings didn't turn out as probably as positive as y'all would have wanted it or we would have wanted it. And our engineering staff, Mr. Smith, who's, who's on the WebEx, Jeremy Gosden, the planning division manager, all the planning and development staff, we worked hard on this. HAF has worked hard on this. It is essential moving forward for development and essential for our MS four permit. So we, we hope for a good vote.
All right. Good. Any other questions, comments? Well, I thought, I thought it was a very proficient presentation. And I believe the board is satisfied and answered all the questions or had comments. I guess it's a particular time, I guess we will, I would, I'd entertain a motion, I guess, for the approval of the, the presentation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna raise a point similar to the last time we had a presentation like this. This is the first time we're seeing it. This, this is affecting policy. I think it would be prudent for the commission to defer this for a month to consider it. See if there are any additional questions before we vote and set it, send it to the city board of directors.
Commissioner Russell, is that, are you making a statement on that or were you considering a motion for that?
I would make a motion to defer the approval of this report for one month so that the commission can consider it.
Well, before we get a second on that, what I would like to do is, is there any other commissioners that's on here that's present? Because I know we had. Because I know we had some commissioners that had to leave, so they're not present. Any other commissioners had any other thing on this, about this? I know Commissioner Russell had a motion. Did any other commissioner have another motion or anything? I'm just trying to be fair and put it out there. That's all. I got a question from, from staff real quick before we try to make a motion and adjourn. Is this something that the city was saying that they had some type of timeline that they were trying to get back to? I'm just, just questioning. Not that that's a degree of significance, but I was just trying to have some appreciation. And I'm sure the board is, we all trying to have some appreciation.
Mr. Chair, there, we are, there is a timeline. To answer your question, yes. We, we do need to have this passed in order to maintain our MS4 permit. But any debate and any reflection over the plan is always good. We don't, staff doesn't have any issue with that. But we would hope that we could move this forward.
Okay. All right. Well, there, there was about to be a motion. I was just trying to have a full understanding on that.
So, for point, two points of clarification, because I guess I wasn't clear on staff's response. Because I know we do have a number of folks missing. I know Commissioner Russell, say he, he likes to read these things in more detail. And, you know, I personally do too, because I spent a lot of time as a consultant in my career. And I know sometimes there's stuff buried in reports that doesn't come across in the presentation. Are you, is staff saying that this needs to be passed now? Or is staff saying it's okay if we do take a month to review it? Because that's what I guess I'm not, not clear on.
Commissioner, I am saying that the budgetary process is nearing us quickly. Certainly, this will be a factor in it. So, having all of our cards on the table when we start the budgetary process is preferable. But I under, I understand the points that were raised.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Russell to the extent that in the future, it would be nice to have these plans, be it the master downtown plan or the stormwater plan, you know, a few weeks ahead of time to consider. I mean, obviously, HAF excellent job, both of y'all, Mr. Simmons and Ms. Rogers. Yeah, I know this stuff isn't easy. But I, I think in light of the fact that we do have deadlines, I support voting for this tonight. But I do know that we do have a motion, I think, from Commissioner Russell that hasn't yet been seconded.
Yeah, so what we can do, Commissioner Russell, if you want to restate your, your motion here, just so we can have it on record, and...
No, no, I would like to, I would like my motion to stand. I think it is a deep service to the people that we serve as the planning commission to vote for this report tonight. It has not been given due consideration. We've just heard it tonight. And if we vote on it and approve it, just like the master plan, we're not doing our job. So, my motion stands. I would like to defer, I am making a motion to defer this application for one month so that the planning commission can consider it carefully and ask any additional questions.
Commissioner Russell, that's actually what I was saying. I was asking that you want to make your motion so that we can get a second and...
I already have made the motion twice.
Well, it wasn't, it was, it was, it was a motion, but it wasn't seconded. So, I was asking to restate it, the motion for the record. So that we can have it on record, so we can make sure what are we voting on? And if you made a motion for that, if we, we don't have a second yet, but if we have a second, then we can get a vote on it.
I'll, I'll second it. I, I remember the motion he made. I'll, I'll second it, motion for deferral.
All right. Well, I just want to be clear for all of the commissioners that are here. It's been a long, it's, it's been a few hours here. So, I just want to make sure just for the record, everybody understands what they're actually voting on and what exactly is it. All right. So, at this time, we can get a roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
No.
We have five yes, two no. We didn't get the six, so...
So, that motion failed. We, we just don't have enough commissioners here to do the business of the people, pretty much, is what it amounts to.
So, I guess at this point, and just staff, because of the shortage of the commissioners available tonight, would that go into deferment for the exact next month? And if it goes into deferment, will we have, obviously, time to review? I'm sorry, Commissioner Baxter, were you saying something?
Yeah. My understanding is, okay, the vote to defer failed because there weren't six votes supporting it. So, if the vote to defer failed, we still have to vote on whether we approve it or not, correct?
Correct. Or we have to vote to defer it.
Again, which would be asinine. So, I would like to make a motion that we approve the plan that was presented by the team at HAF and present it to the board for their adoption.
We have a motion on the table, and we have a second. May we please get a roll call?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Hodges?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Vickers?
Yes.
We have five yes and two no. Same vote.
Hung jury.
We, we are hung jury. I do agree with, I do agree with Commissioner Russell. I, I think, I think it would be worth it to take, I was, guys, the master plan from last month. I appreciate the master plan and, but I, but I voted to go ahead and send that one because master plans are master plans, and you got to have billions of dollars to make those happen. This, this is important to the city, and I, and I would like to take a look at it for the, over the next 30 days. And because there are a lot of things that come up in the document that don't get highlighted in the presentation. So, I just think it's a good idea to give us 30 days to look at it and review it. So, that's why I voted.
I, I think, and you made a good point, Commissioner. I think you made a good point. Commissioner Russell made a good point. Here is the deal. I don't think anybody on this board is serving, is volunteering their time to do anything to deceive the citizens of this great city. I think everybody want to do what's right and, and do things by code and by the law. So, I don't think anybody's up here saying that, hey, we do not want to know what's in this presentation. I think even Commissioner Russell said, hey, you know, even by this presentation, this is lenient. You know, this is not even, you know, these steps are, these stipulations are, they're minor compared to other cities of what their codes are. So, and, you know, obviously, we, we want to show good stewardship and, and time and preservation of, of, you know, our roads up here. And it's not just, I, I would love to have time to review everything. I don't care what it is. It can be contracts, bills, anything, if I can have time to view it. But sometimes we're not afforded that, that opportunity at, at all times. So, again...
We are afforded that opportunity if we vote to defer.
Well, it depends. And I'm sorry, Brad, you was raising your hand. I didn't see you, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, staff would request, and we would certainly, at this point, support deferral. And we would request that the vote to, that was just made, be expunged because that was a vote against the, the stormwater manual. So, if we can expunge, make a motion to expunge that vote and then have another motion to defer, that would be preferable.
All right. Well, the, based on the, I mean, everybody has heard it. I would entertain that motion to dispunge the...
Yeah, motion to defer, motion to expunge the prior vote and then vote to defer.
All right. All right, we have a, I'm sorry, Brad.
We need to vote to expunge first. We need a motion in a second, to expunge first.
So, vote, motion to expunge the prior vote.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Vickers?
Yes.
All right, we have six. It has been expunged.
All right. Now, we need to make a motion to defer?
Yeah, I make a motion that we defer until next month. Defer the passage, defer the vote of this until next month, giving the planning commission the next 30 days to review the report.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right, can I please get a roll call for a minute, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
The plan has been deferred till next August, this August, this month.
All right.
Next month.
All right. Next meeting. Do we have any other new business or anything like that? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for staff, for your time. Commissioners, thank you all so much. We know it's been a long evening. Everybody have a safe drive home. God bless. Good night.